All right, are we ready? Okay. It is six o'clock and we will call the city council meeting of October 10, 2023 to order. And Councilman Joe Herring is going to lead us in a prayer and pledge. You'll stand, please.
Lord, thank you for this community. Thank you for this place and all those who are gathered here to talk about the business of this town. Thank you for the first responders who are out making our streets safe and helping those in need. Thank you for the rain you sent recently, and we appreciate some more. Lord, the world is an unsafe place. Know you hear the cries of those in the war zones tonight, both in Israel and in Ukraine and Gaza. Peace. That peace. Thank you for all that you've given us. Give us strength and wisdom, peace and honor, for which in your holy name I pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joe. Stuart, you have some announcements for us.
Welcome to everyone tonight. See if I can get my announcements up on the screen there. We actually, we had someone call the city today wanting to know if the city was aware that we have an eclipse this weekend. We are aware, and we actually have NASA coming to visit with us, so that's going to be a big deal. And the first place they're going to be is at the library Friday. I think they're going to be here at 1:00. And from 1:00 to 4:00, they'll be having some individual talks and talking about different things that are going on, talking about the sky, I think they have some giveaways. And then at 4:00, Dr. Therese Moretto Jorgensen will be speaking. And she'll be talking about what causes eclipses, telling us about the sun, the moon, and the earth. And again, that starts at 4:00. Now, maybe you can help me out. Dr. Jorgensen is deputy director for the heliophysics division. So if you know what that means, you probably did better in science in high school than I did.
It isn't the science.
Yeah, hard to say, heliophysics. Anyhow, so that's Friday. And then, of course, NASA will be with us Saturday for the actual eclipse, which we are just coinciding with the Chalk Festival and, of course, the Kerrville River Festival. Chalk Festival will be right out here at Peterson Plaza, goes from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And then the River Festival begins after the eclipse, which is scheduled, I think, sometime 10:50 or 11:15 in the morning. But Louise Hayes Park, we'll be starting letting people in at 10:00. And we're looking forward to that, and NASA will be there, too. So a really big event, big weekend, and we're very excited about it. We're going to have a lot of people here. Not this weekend, but next weekend, it's time for Halloween. Haunted Ghoul Pool will be Saturday and Sunday, October 21st, 22nd, 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Olympic Pool. I think there's a family tour at 5:00 if you want to take your kids. And then that little scarier one at 7:00 for adults. $5 per person, that's a fun event every year, we encourage you to come out. We have city employees dressing up, trying to scare people. I'll be dressing up as Mike Hayes. So those are my announcements, and I'll turn it over to you.
That's unkind.
Sorry.
And I believe there's also, Shriner is having Dr. Jorgensen, she'll be out there at 8:00 Saturday morning. And then they're inviting people to be on the lawn and watch the eclipse. And I think the Cal Theater also has, Friday night, has a Dr. Kate Calvin, who's going to give a presentation. So, and then the Lions camp is doing, they're inviting people out on Saturday.
And I forgot one thing, I was going to, I was actually going to wear these while reading that, but when you put these on, you can't see anything. I want to encourage people to wear their eclipse glasses. If you don't have some, get some, do not look at it directly, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, thank you. I wanted also to mention that Katie Milton, who is with our Kerrville Economic Development Corporation, won or was awarded an excellence in economic development, it's called a gold award, from a group that is part of KEDC, and it's a group that they are, that KEDC is part of, a national group, and we congratulate her. And this has to do with her work with childcare and what she has been doing, working with that in our community. So congratulations to Katie. Then I would like, we need to officially introduce, as, and he is now on staff, our new city manager, Dalton Rice. And we are glad to have you in the hot seat and look forward to you being here. So, thanks. All right, we are ready for visitors forum, shall we?
Presentations.
Oh, we're doing the presentations first. That's right, I'm sorry, thank you. All right, I believe the fire department's up first. Come on up here, gentlemen. Come on down. I have all of you here tonight, and we are here to proclaim Fire Prevention Month. So, City of Kerrville proclamation, whereas the City of Kerrville is committed to ensuring the safety of all those living in and visiting Kerrville. Home fires are a serious public safety concern. And whereas, in 2021, the National Fire Protection Association reported more than 2,800 lives were lost in the United States due to home fires and fire departments across the country, due to home fires and fire departments across the country responded to 338,000 home fires. Whereas, cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States. Fire departments respond to more than 166,000 annually. Two of the very, two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with 31% of these fires resulting from unattended cooking. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half. And whereas, the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, quote, "Cooking Safety Starts With You", pay attention to fire prevention, effectively serves as a reminder to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now therefore, I, Judy Eitner, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Fire Prevention Month and urge citizens and visitors of Kerrville to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices for Fire Prevention Month 2023. And I have signed it. So we thank you guys over and over and over. We appreciate you so very, very much. And I would like for all of you to introduce yourselves and tell us what you do.
All right, Jaren Floyd, Central Station Lieutenant on A shift.
Travis Hoosier, Central Station on A shift, I'm the driver.
And one other thing that you'll add, how long have you been doing what you're doing?
I've been with the fire department for 18 years.
Kerrville for six years.
Mark Logue, A shift, fire chief, been with the city for 27 years.
Jerry Weaver, I'm C shift, I'm a driver, been for 12 years.
Gerald Luddy, I'm the deputy fire marshal, been with the department for 24 years.
Jason Lakey, fire marshal for the city, been with the city for 12 years.
Eric Coloney, fire chief, 26 years.
Fantastic, fantastic, thank you.
We've been doing fire prevention all week, so it's something we do year round, but this is really a big focus that we've been, so we're in the elementary schools. We've been to the library recently and many other daycares out there. And want to just give a thanks out to our community and those that donate to the program, allow this to be, to make this happen, and we're able to give out some of the goodies and the other stuff that really kind of brings, brings it all back home. And we made that impact, and we make that difference. It's the, it's the difference you make by getting out there and doing the prevention that you never know. Yeah, you never know the impact it made, and what was it, Chief Logue, that was six years ago?
Roughly the little girl in the mobile home.
Yeah, so fire prevention saved her life, saved her family's life because of what she remembered when a fire prevention was out there and provided that information. She knew to get low, she got him out and saved her life, so those that give you the chills.
Well, the proclamation mentions smoke detectors. Don't you install those or give them out free?
We do, in coordination with the Red Cross.
Okay, all right. So all somebody needs to do, if they don't have any, is call you and say, or call the Red Cross?
Call fire administration, and they'll put them on a list, and we'll get to them.
All right.
Get them installed for them.
Wonderful, wonderful. Anything else, chief, you want to say?
That's it.
Anything, any of you would like to add?
Just thank you for having us up here, it's a very important program, and we appreciate the acknowledgement of it.
We appreciate you guys, absolutely. I'm astounded at the number of years you've been doing what you're doing. Fantastic. Okay, do we need some pictures? Okay, you guys can hold this.
Great, thank you.
All right, turn around, shake a hand, have a council member.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I'll walk on by.
Thank you for all you do.
I'm welcome, thank you so much.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next, I believe we have Mini Mart. Come on and over and glad to have you guys today. So, City of Kerrville proclamation, we've got a lot of 50s and 100s in, 25 years this year, so yours is 50, and it's fantastic. Whereas, in 1973, Junior Fritz and wife Ann opened their first Mini Mart store in Kerrville, Texas. The idea of owning a chain of stores had its beginnings when Junior and Ann owned Fritz Grocery and Market in Center Point, Texas. While working side by side, they lived behind the store and raised their children, Sylvia and David Jr. And Ann's engaging customer service led to a popular shopping destination. And whereas, as Fritz Grocery prospered, they began to explore expansion opportunities. A pivotal moment came when Junior Fritz heard about a relatively new concept, the convenience store. And it was not long before Fritz Grocery and Market would transform into a chain of Mini Mart convenience stores. And whereas, in 2013, Sylvia Fritz Dobbs and David Fritz followed in their family's footsteps and took over ownership of Hill Country Mini Mart LP. The business partners shared the vision, supported by their spouses, Razor Dobbs and Stacy Fritz. The next generation of Fritz siblings, Gage and Lucy, have also become involved in the family business. Today, 18 Mini Mart stores are located nearby in communities throughout the Hill Country, in Vandera, Center Point, Comfort, Fredericksburg, Ingram, and Kerrville. And whereas, hospitality is rooted in the Mini Mart culture. It extends from each of its 200 team members to its customers. Sylvia and David Credit, Junior and Ann are teaching them how to run a successful business through truly caring for people. In 2018, the Kerrville Chamber of Commerce recognized Sylvia Fritz Dobbs and David Fritz with the Business Persons of the Year award. That was great. And whereas, 50 years ago, Junior Fritz served as a Center Point Fire Department volunteer. Today, as part of Mini Mart's 50th celebration, their customers, friends, and business partners have given just over $115,000 to support the local volunteer fire departments in Kirk County and the communities they serve in Vandera, Gillespie, and Kendall County. Sylvia Fritz Dobbs and David Fritz personally contributed $15,000 to this volunteer fire department fundraiser. Now therefore, I, Judy Eitner, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby recognize Mini Mart and the Fritz family on this 50th anniversary for their outstanding commitment, care, and service to our community. We thank you. This was a great story, and I had no idea that's how your, how your dad got started. That was super, yes. So.
Thank you.
Have a few words for us?
Yes, so we, we thank you, and council members, and I have to work on your name in the beginning.
That's all right.
And I have some notes here.
All right.
Journey here, so, but it's our honor to serve the, been serving the Hill Country for 50 years, and this is for you, Mom and Dad. And we'd like to thank our, our customers and our, our friends and our business partners and our family and our amazing team and staff at Mini Mart, because without them, we wouldn't be here. So we, we know that. So, yeah, so we learned, we learned how important it is to give back to our communities from our parents. And so thanks to the generosity of our customers and our business partners and friends, we're proud to announce for our 50th volunteer fire department fundraiser, we're going to actually give a little over $116,000. Thank you, everyone. 100% to Kirk County, and then it'll go to parts of Vandera, Gillespie, and Kendall, where, that surround our Mini Mart, right there. So, again, thank everybody and blessings to everybody who loves our Texas Hill Country.
We also thank you, you've done the fireworks for the Fourth of July for a number of years. You give back in that regard, and you guys are just, you're great partners in the, in our community. We appreciate it. Okay, I think we need probably a picture, we'll let you have that.
One more. Thank you.
And, oh, you forgot, over here. Okay, shake some hands.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I know where you are now.
All right, two great things, neat. We are blessed with all of our first responders and, and the people in our community. We really, truly are. Okay, now we can do the visitors forum.
We have five sisters signed up.
Okay, all right. And I'm going to ask everybody if they will limit their talks to, let's do three minutes tonight. We've got a long agenda, but we'll let you have three minutes. So, who's first?
George Broody.
George Broody, 1616 Glen Road. So I'm just going to talk briefly about, we keep, everybody knows there's a housing problem. Okay, we all get that. But unfortunately, the solutions that we keep presenting are actually sort of perpetuating a myth that it's actually solving a problem. Our housing costs in the community is too much for the incomes that people can actually earn in this community. That's the problem. It's not the house price, it's not the income, it's the relationship between the two. And we keep trying to address with local funding, a housing problem at the price point stage. You really shouldn't subsidize homeownership with local money, because all that does is it reallocates the cost of housing to somewhere else in your same community. So you really haven't done anything. And so what you should be doing, if you're going to try and subsidize housing, you should be looking at, and there's a ton of it, state money and federal money, because they're earmarked for such a thing, and that's what we should be doing. If a, if an employer doesn't have, can't retain their employees because of the housing costs, maybe what we should be doing is looking at the, the salaries that they're paying those employees, because it's out of sync with the community that they're trying to run their business in. It includes the school district, includes the hospital, all of these. The, the problem is the incomes that people make, that's what drives people here. Housing is not a driver of economics, it's a necessary expense. It's tied to filling the workforce. So please reconsider how you solve this housing problem.
Thank you.
Peggy McKay.
Peggy McKay, 103 Westchester, speaking of blessings, mayor. I'm here to give the statistics for St. Vincent de Paul for the year 2022 and 2023. The food distributed went to 1,806 households in 6,700 visits. Provided, they provided food and assistance in an amount exceeding $1.1 million in one year. $350,000 was paid to 2,600 utility bills, which included the K-Pub change for charity. $57 million approximately went to other sources, such as need for clothing, furniture, appliances, gasoline. In an average day, there are 70 visits, 59 requests for food, 27 for assistance with utilities. Over 3,800 pounds of food distributed each of these days. $3,600 will be dispensed for utility bills, which again includes the K-Pub program. $600 to other assistance. In the last year, St. Vincent de Paul has seen a 32% increase in requests for help. And as I've mentioned before, when I've addressed council, volunteers are always needed. You can call the office at 830-896-6898. And I failed to mention, the support for these programs comes from Notre Dame Church, from donations from St. Vincent de Paul members, and also the K-Pub Change for Charity program. So the people are working or volunteering, they're not working there, they're volunteering there. And they are wonderful, dedicated people, but you can see the need in the increase in the past year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad Wilson.
And Peggy, just thank everybody there, you guys play a very, very important part in our community.
Good evening, mayor, council members. I'm Brad Wilson, I'm commander of VFW here, 1480 here in Kerrville. And this is Sarah Kosurik, she is in charge of the Hill Country Veterans Center. And we are here so we can discuss planning of the Veterans Day parade. So, councilmen. Sorry, names are escaping me currently, and the microphone is bugging me.
You're good, the microphone will pick you up, it's for the live stream, yeah, you're good.
So, we would like to have planning for a similar parade as we ran last year. The parade route started on Hill Country Drive. Actually, we had permission from Peterson Healthcare to stage in a parking lot there and proceeded north on Cully Drive, and then turned east on Thompson Drive, and ultimately terminate the parade in Louise Hayes Park. We are seeking assistance with permitting for the Veterans Day parade. We also would like a waiver of any fees, please, associated with above permitting, which I believe a parade fee and
Special events fee.
And a special events fee. There's a question mark about insurance, I think last year we ran insurance on the event. And then, you know, what monetary value is that assigned to, and how do we, you know, come up with that? And then fire and police department participation. And then, of course, ultimately we'll seek permission from Peterson Healthcare to stage in the parking lot again, so. We're here this evening just to kind of kickstart this process, because we're running out of time for planning purposes. We need to get some, some floats on board. We would like to have a similar amount of floats as we did last year. I think we were in the 20, mid twenties on the float count. And they had a great amount of community participation. We have contacted some of those individuals that were involved in that and are interested again. I don't know whether or not we'll have time yet to plan for marching bands from high schools. They require a little more notice probably than we're able to give them this time. So we'll do what we can on the planning of those things, but ultimately here this evening so that we can get permission for waiver of fees associated with above and, you know, get some direction in the permitting aspect of that whole event.
What is the date?
Date would be November 11, right, Saturday, and proposed time, 10:00 a.m. I think, I think the VA has a
Their parade at, I believe it's at 2:00 p.m.
All right, their annual parade at 2:00 p.m., the car show thing over on the VA grounds. So we don't want to interfere with that, it is Veterans Day, we want to honor veterans as best we can. And, you know, any help that we can gain from the city in doing so would be much appreciated.
Have you submitted any permits yet?
I have not.
Okay. You need to see Drew over here, and
Now, what kind of assistance are you looking for with permitting? Are you wanting the permits, these?
Yeah, really just Yes, and then, you know, which permits do we really need to file, who to do that with? This is kind of our first year running it, so.
Okay. Should we start with somebody besides Drew? Can we start with you, Drew? Okay, all right, you've got his number.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And Sarah, can I ask one question? Are y'all going to plan on doing something in the park like was done last year, or just terminate in the park and disperse?
We had, had hopes that we would be able to have a local area band just to play a couple minutes, but we honestly do not have any confirmation at this time. So it's probably just going to be staging up at Peterson, starting about 9:00, coming down into the park and
And terminating from there, unless somebody, you know, from the council or the mayor, if you'd like to say a piece or speak at the end of the parade, the termination point.
We can talk about that.
That would require some additional planning for the stage and sound equipment.
Okay, all right, we can talk about that. We'll get a number to you through Jeff for Parks and Rec and see what we can do.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
You guys are going to have to get busy, Lev is coming up quick.
Mayor, I believe last year we waived the fees right here from the dais, can we do that?
Did we do it from the dais?
I think we did.
I had to get it as an agenda item.
Yeah, it was an agenda item.
Because I was the one standing there last year asking.
Yeah, we can't take action on anything unless it's on the agenda, so.
But we'll, we'll look into it for you.
All right, thank you very much.
All right.
Mayor and council, I came tonight with words of commendation for the council and for the staff, but I've changed directions. In light of what's happening in our world today, I have traveled to Israel for 33 years, numerous times. Got to know people from Galilee to the southern tip of Israel at Alot on the Red Sea. The hearts of Jewish persons around the world and in the Kerrville area are hurting tonight. We have a small Jewish community in Kerrville, but I urge all of us to reach out to them in Kerrville kindness. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we are ready for our number four consent agenda. Is there, are there any items on that agenda that we need to pull? Any council members?
I do want to note that Councilmember Garcia asked for the workshop minutes to be amended as the adjourned time at 6:00 p.m.
Okay. And that is, which, which one is?
Four D.
Four B?
D.
D, D, D. Okay, okay. So we have an amendment there.
Mayor, if no one else has anything to pull, I'll move to approve the consent agenda items 4A through 4E with that amendment to the workshop minutes for D.
Second. We have a second. We will, all in favor, raise hands, please, and it is unanimous. And thank you very much. All right, we are ready then for 5A.
And Mayor Eichner, please note that Councilmember Harris will be recusing himself at this time.
Yes.
Due to a conflict of interest, I have filed the proper paperwork with the City Secretary's Office. I'm going to step out on this one.
All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Resolution number 33-2023, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize an independent living facility for seniors on property generally located adjacent to Memorial Boulevard, State Highway 27, and between its intersection with Mika Road and Laurel Street comprising an approximate 0.53 acres and more commonly known as 2916 Memorial Boulevard. Said property is located within a light commercial zoning district, C2, and making said permits subject to certain conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Thank you.
Good evening, councils. This is a resolution for a conditional use permit for an independent living facility for seniors. This project actually came back to council about a year ago as the applicant was going through planning with Fire Department and his design team. That CUP did expire, so he has reapplied with an updated site plan. This is, again, Zone C2. It is consistent with the Kerrville 2050 plan. And here is the updated site plan. Again, working with Fire Marshal for emergency access and all the other fire code implications on the design. They did up to nine units. I believe the previous plan had seven. Meets parking standards as required by the zoning code, and the Planning and Zoning Commission approved it with unanimous vote on September 7. And the applicant is here. Any questions?
They went from nine to seven?
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine, okay. All right, council, any questions for Drew? Do, does the applicant, would they like to say a few words?
I'm Rick Carey. I'm developing the property. I've been in elder care for 20 years here in Kerrville. This is just another option for our seniors. The target audience for this is probably going to be a spouse living alone and needing some, able to live independently, but we will provide some sort of nursing checkup care for these residents and also some other services through my office, caring senior service for them if needed. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a house setting, a small, tiny house setting, which will not require any kind of maintenance. We'll provide all of that and, but a small community and another option for our seniors.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Carey?
Yeah, I do a couple. What's the level of care that's going to be done here? Is it, is it more like assisted living?
No, it will be independent living.
Independent living. Will it be pet friendly?
Yes, to some, to some, to a small extent.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, my only other concern is I'm looking at this, this map, the fire lane, and how are you going to get that fire truck to those back units? Is it just going to be hose?
Yes, the, the distance from the end of the fire lane has to be within 150 feet for their hoses, and so the city Fire Marshal has approved this design that they will be able to service those.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. At 6:35, we will open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers signed up? Or is there anyone who wishes to speak? All right, at 6:35, we will close the public hearing. Council, any further questions or comments? All right, are we ready for a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 33-2023.
Second.
We have a second, all in favor, right hand, and it is approved. All right, thank you very much. And if Jeff is listening, he is, there he comes. All right, 6A.
Ordinance, ordinance number 2023-29, an ordinance annexing an approximate 214.1 acre tract of land, which includes an adjacent right-of-way existing as a portion of Olympic Drive, all of which is out of the Samuel Wallace Survey Number 114, Abstract Number 348, and Samuel Wallace Survey Number 113, Abstract Number 347, into the corporate limits of the City of Kerrville, Texas. Such property being located within Kerr County, Texas, in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Kerrville, Texas, and generally located adjacent to Loop 534 and north of Olympic Drive, further describing the property to be annexed, adopting a service plan for the property annexed, and establishing the zoning both for the property annexed and a contiguous tract of land located adjacent to Loop 534, providing other matters relating to the subject. There are six speakers signed up, and this is a public hearing.
All right, Drew?
This is, again, an annexation, and we are zoning a portion of the property that's currently within the city limits. I've got some exhibits to show that. The Planning and Zoning Commission did review this, excuse me, within, voted with a 4-0 vote. There were some changes between Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council, and I'll go through those as well. This is the property to be annexed, the 214 acres. Your ordinance references this as Property 1, and this map shows that and the property in your ordinance as Property 2. So you see the line, the hatch lines along the loop. A portion of that is currently zoned ag. It'll be rezoned to C3. A portion of that is zoned PI. It'll be zoned to C3. And a couple portions zoned PI. It'll be zoned PD. All of Property 2 consisting of about 21 acres that is currently in the city limits. And then here's their final plan, showing the C3 along the loop, the planned development district for development, and then the back 101 acres will remain ag zoning as it comes into the city. Planning and Zoning Commission, the original proposal did have 25-foot lots for a portion of the development. That was part of the planned development district proposal. After some feedback from the Planning Commission, they asked to reduce the percentage of the product throughout the development, and Lennar actually came back and said they weren't going to do any of the 25-foot since they weren't getting great community feedback, and moved that up to a minimum of 35-foot lot. So it'll be a combination of 35-foot lots and 45-foot lots for the development. And here's the standards for those development lots, 3850 square feet for the lot size, minimum lot size for a 35-foot lot, minimum 20-foot front setback, five-foot side setbacks as standard, and minimum 10-foot rear setback. And that gives them a little bit of flexibility on those lots to place their standard home sites. This is within the catalyst area that surrounds Loop 534 and the middle school and the high school. Additionally, it's currently a donut hole in the city limits, so we'll be closing that. And there's the catalyst area there. And again, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended with a 4-0 vote, and staff recommends the approval for your consideration. If you'd please answer any questions before or after public hearing, and we do have representatives from the applicant's...
Very good. Council, any questions for Drew at this point?
Deliberating, can you go back to the slide you just had? It's probably the next one, this one. I want to take a look at that. Y'all can, if you, if you want to go ahead and continue, I'm, I'm looking at it with some notes that I have. Yes, thank you.
Drew, I have a question, something we've run into a couple of times in town is, and it doesn't look like, on those cul-de-sacs, there is no entry into that ag area.
If you'll see...
Is there any place that in the future, there would be access?
Yes, there is. The collector that comes off Loop 534 between the two commercial properties on the right-hand side, if you'll follow that one as it goes up northwest...
I got you.
It actually is planned to have two stubouts for future roads to go northwest and northeast, should those connections ever be, be necessary, or in some cases with these hills even possible for some of those. Much more development would, would need to be around those for those to continue because they are getting back into the pretty steep topography, but they did leave a stubout for future connections if it's needed.
Okay. That particular street, will it be any wider to...
Yes, that is...
Would, to accommodate that?
That one is a collector, and you'll see the intersecting street that comes down to Olympic Drive. Both of those are collector streets, so those are additional 10-foot wide of right-of-way and additional 10-foot wide of pavement. They do not, do not have any houses fronting those roads as per our subdivision code and zoning code, so that they're not impacted by neighborhood traffic, and it is really a true collector to, to get people back out to the thoroughfare.
Okay, all right. Okay. Okay, no questions, no comments up here? Roman?
So I'm looking at our thoroughfare plan that we have right now, and if they're going to join onto Loop 534, kind of in that center area, that's going to deviate from what we currently have on our thoroughfare plan. Is that going to be, is that, that's, that's pretty significant right there that the thoroughfare plan has, and what is it? I think it had a collector going further up towards 534. Another thing is Olympic Drive, just driving by there when school's out or school's getting in session, that's a very busy road, and I'm concerned, I haven't seen, one of the things I requested to take a look at was the traffic impact analysis to see what is going to happen here, but it does seem that if we're going to try to follow the plan that we put together in our thoroughfares, this deviates from that. And second, I want to understand why do they need a, a PD, a Planned Development District, instead of using a set district that we already have? I mean, R2 from, and that's why I looked at this, R2 seems fairly close to this if I'm not, if I'm looking at all of that correctly.
Correct. The thoroughfare plan, the future roads are intended to show alignment and connections, not exact locations. So rather than the city trying to dictate where those future roads would go exactly, we're focusing on making those connections from Olympic through this development as the developer chooses to make a connection to Loop 534. So those were not intended to be specific connection points, but rather just making, making sure we have those connections for connectivity throughout town. So the deviation on where that road is aligned actually is consistent with the thoroughfare plan to have that flexibility. The, the reason for the planned development district, the R2 zoning district or anything less than a 45-foot lot also requires an additional alley. And obviously with their target of workforce housing and Lennar's standard development practice, they do not build that additional alleyway. That would be additional right-of-way, additional space, and of course additional cost with their target to try to keep the price point down to the workforce housing market. That was not feasible for their plan. So they did request the planned development district to make that shift.
How significant is it to put in an alley like that?
You're, you're basically building an extra road.
I, I know what an alley is, but I'm saying how, how significant is it to, to put it in to now deviate from our zoning code? And, and I know, I don't mean deviate because we have a PD, it's an allowable use, we can allow that, and that's why we're here. But I mean, instead of using a different district that has already had set characteristics and regulations to it, if, if the only thing is an alley, I mean, is it that significant to have to create a PD now?
As far as the specific numbers, I'll let Mr. Karan explain that, but they are, they would have to build an additional street for every block where they're already building a street, plus the additional land. So that would significantly cut into the amount of land that they can develop for homes or sacrificing the lot size to be smaller lots than what the R2 would allow. And Councilmember also, you know, with the thoroughfare plan, I think it was 2018, you know, with the 2050 plan, also 2018, you know, a lot had kind of changed. And when you look at the alleyway style, especially in a lot of other planned development districts or master plan communities, those are usually high-end homes. You'll have the frontage road, and please correct me if I'm wrong, you'll have the main road or the collector, but then you'll have the front-facing house, and then you'll have usually another alleyway in the front or an alleyway in the back. Because we're trying to go the more affordable housing route, trying to keep that price point down, less concrete, less maintenance, less, less everything. So I think it kind of shows the, the due diligence of the team as well. As we start looking at the 2018 studies, we may need to kind of go back and reevaluate some of these to make sure that we are realigning with some of the new challenges that we're facing in 2023 and 2024. But usually you'll see those higher-end homes with the alleyway.
Okay. Would you like to, we'll listen to the developer and then open for public hearing. That be all right?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you, I appreciate it. My name is James McKnight. I'm here representing Lennar as their land use attorney. I just want to make a couple of comments. Didn't have a full presentation for this because I think Drew covered most of it, but what you're, what you're talking about, Councilman, is trying to find the least disruptive way to make the development work. And in removing the alleyways, it would be great if we could use R2 with some small change or R1 with some small change. And really, the only way to do it is you, you have to look through the code to find the best mechanism. The PD is the best mechanism for doing that. It allows this chance to make the code what you need it to while following everything else. And what we're doing here is essentially saying it is R1 except for this one small change. So in our, in our minds, it's not that significant. It looks significant because it's PD versus R1, but that's just because of the nature of how the code is written, as we just try to find the, the least disruptive way to do it. And that's what this is. Because in the end, it still follows all the rest of the, the R1 standards. So it is, it's essentially an R1 subdivision, but allows us to have that smaller lot without the alley.
Anything else you'd like to share with us before we open the public hearing?
I think that's all I have. Now, unless there's a specific question.
All right, thank you. Okay, at 6:48, we will open the public hearing. Shall we?
Okay, the first one will be by Corey Edmison. He's the president and CEO of Peterson Health. I placed his letter at each of your seats. He states, "Dear Kerrville City Council, I'm writing today to express our support of the Lennar-Winrich project. It's common knowledge that attainable housing is a chronic issue in our community. We are facing a critical shortage. Access to housing is a fundamental need in any thriving community. This project helps fill the gap we currently face in Kerrville. As the largest employer in Kerr County, we continue to have challenges recruiting talented young healthcare professionals and often hear that housing is a major reason that people choose to work and live elsewhere. Without the ability to attract employees, we face the real possibility at some point in the future not being able to provide the comprehensive healthcare services we currently do. This will impact longtime residents and newcomers alike. Kerrville is the gem of the Texas Hill Country. Without the proper amount and mix of housing, we risk losing much of what makes this place so special. We fully support this project and respectfully ask the council to do the same." And we have Brad Barnett.
Good evening, Council. Brad Barnett, Kerrville Area Chamber of Commerce, 1700 Sidney Baker Suite 100. One of the key components for the chamber's strategic plan is really to support initiatives like this that help with workforce development. Without workforce housing, without that attainable housing, our businesses are going to continue. Without workforce housing, without that attainable housing, our businesses are going to continue to struggle to operate effectively. So while we don't generally support specific initiatives, initiatives like this are very important to the extent that when then-Mayor Blackburn, when I got here, we took over his housing commission that he has started, and we're meeting at least quarterly on that, coordinating with the city. So, you know, we support this need to help alleviate this problem for our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pablo Brickman.
Pablo Brickman, 3928 Oak Park Drive, Mayor, Members of Council. I'm here also to, to represent Shriner University if there's any questions that come up. It checks all the boxes. We've been through this, we've, we've gone through, it's, it's a need. You had a speaker tonight that talked about raising salaries, and I just kind of bewilderedly listened to that in that it was almost as if we need to change who lives here. And, and so we have people who live here, we have people who want to buy this product. Lennar's production right now is not outpaced the need and contracts for this, and it continues to be in line for everything that we've done. So I implore you to just look at this, look at all the reasons, Kerrville 2050 Plan, what it's done. Some great questions tonight on how the property's set up. You've got to remember that this is not a, a one-time deal. This is a development that's going to take many years to do. With the PD that's before you, I think we have roughly 64 homes per year promised. You're going to have umpteen months of development. So before we, they ever go vertical, you're looking at that time. And so you're looking at potentially, I think, 8.35 years for a full build-out of this. So it's not like we need 511 homes that we need to fulfill, and as you build it, they will come. So our firm's going to be representing the 350-foot strip that's in front that we have some pretty good restrictions on for commercial development. And we have a lot of interest in that, and the interest is based purely on if you build it, they will come. So we need to get the ball field gone so Kevin Costner can start watching the game. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Nikki Keynes. I live in the city. I'm taking a, kind of a different look at it. I am questioning why this development even should come before the council as a PDD. I find that a lot of the, the housing developments generally get approval anyway, and that it is getting quite a few benefits from this. Zoning being one, the lots being smaller, and the rezoning. When it says that the remaining portion would be rezoned as general commercial district, I don't know why, why that would even be in there, unless if you look a little bit farther down in one of the whereas clauses, it says that for future occupants and users of the Plan Development and the emergence of new development trends such as tiny homes, are we possibly looking at this, if, if this goes into effect, that agriculture land behind it, is it going to be a tiny home development? I think that the homeowners here in Kerrville ought to have more transparency on what the future plans from this developer is. I personally would like this pro, this, to be put on hold. We don't even know how well the existing Lennar development is going to go over. It's not finished, and, and I agree that we are looking at a three-to-five-year finished product, but the first, the first development is taking quite a bit longer. If this could be put on hold for a while and let the first development go into effect, see how well it is accepted or not, and then we may want to continue to look at our water and our lack of here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Wolf.
Good evening, Jerry Wolf. I think this should be the first subject rather than something that's going to seem to be coming back as an afterthought, and that's water. The city of Kerrville continues to annex properties to build more houses, yet this is a contradiction to the complaints we read in every article published about our hill country. When interviewed, citizens of Fredericksburg, Bernie, and New Braunfels expressed regret at the rapid growth rate because they woke up this year to find out they didn't have enough water to maintain their quality of life. This city council and the previous two have encouraged growth by providing financial incentives to, to developers. Yet council has not addressed the means to add to the water supply, especially during a drought. The last four budgets, starting in fiscal year 2021 and through the current year, 23, 24, council has not provided or set aside funds to acquire new sources of drinking water. In fact, the city has yet to even define conservation projects, which is the simplest and the most, the fastest thing that you can do to increase the water supply. The 2020 City Long Range Water Plan recommended these unspecified conservation projects along with completing and producing the Loop 534 Ellenberger Well and the development of an Ellenberger Water Field some 10 to 12 miles northeast of Kerrville. These two recommendations account for 75% of the projected new water source, sources that would be, that would not be affected, they would not be affected during a drought, in where these two sources would always be producing water for Kerrville. Neither of these two projects look highly promising at this time. You are aware that the Loop 534 Ellenberger Well shares the same cone of depression with the well on Meadowview Drive, and therefore is useless during a drought. As for the remote Ellenberger Field, the Gillespie County Underwater District for the last year or so has stopped permitting and drilling into the Ellenberger Formation in southeast Gillespie County, which is adjacent, of course, to Kerr County. That is, the southeast part of Gillespie County is in close proximity to the proposed location of the Ellenberger, proposed Ellenberger Water Field. I do not understand how this city council can approve this annexation for Lennar to build hundreds of more homes without first presenting a comprehensive new water supply plan with proven water sources to the citizens. Do you want Kerrville citizens in the future to be saying to our out-of-town newspapers that we wish we had plenty of water, we wish we had had plenty of water for, before approving so many new housing developments? And then I have a question for you. I got this from the city some time ago. It's the water permit for the wells of Kerrville to be able to operate those and sell the water. And I noticed on here that the expiration date for this permit is September of 2023. So that's just, what, 10 days ago? I'd like to know, has this permit been submitted to Headwaters, and has it been approved?
I believe all of that's been taken care of. Drew, or?
The permits, excuse me, the, the permits that were with Headwaters, they're in discussion, and we're working through all those. So even though the permit shows as expired, we're making sure that we have those conversations with Headwaters to make sure everything is, is done appropriately. So we're opening discussions with Headwaters to make sure we're all on the same page.
What's the question? I don't understand.
So you had the question, we were just making sure that we got the answer, that we are opening discussions with Headwaters to make sure that the permit that, that we have and that we have accurate is right, and that we're submitting the right information to them.
Well, how did it change from this?
I do not know how this has germane to the.
Yeah.
You, you are correct, but it is being taken care of, Jerry, and they're in the process of making sure that it will be, we have water and it will be taken care of. So, thank you.
We do not have a permit right now.
Well, we do not have a permit.
Correct.
Okay.
That's the end of the citizen speakers, but sign up.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak before we close the public hearing?
Bruce Stricki, 820 Monroe Garrett. I really appreciated learning some more about this project tonight. We've been watching this most of the summer as it's gone through P and Z and then at the EIC, and I do have a question. Wasn't this approved at the EIC, but it's never come back to the city council? And I think that got tabled or gotten rid of because we're talking about something entirely differently, so maybe we can respond to that later. But uni, Kerrville is a unique place. And when we look at our zoning ordinance, which we redid in 2019 after the 2050 plan, with a lot of community support and involvement through workshops and meetings and, remember the dots? And all the pictures and the comments that we would write on the big boards? And the citizenry led staff to this zoning ordinance that we have that has this R2 zone. And one of the beauties in the RT zone is that it provides for small lots, narrow lots, and varying setbacks and lot sizes. Lot sizes, in fact, even smaller than 3,850 square feet. And so I get why, if we're doing attainable housing, we're trying to offer the most efficient product to the folks who are hopefully below 80% of median income, though I think the target's 100. That we need to reduce the cost as much as possible. And as Mr. McKnight said, we want to do as little tweaking to that R2 zone as we can if we're going to use the PD, because the entire purpose of the PD is to be unique and innovative. That's the purpose. If you read the purpose statement of the PD, our Plan Development District, it's to be innovative and unique. Unfortunately, this layout is not innovative or unique, but it can be. Again, with very small tweaks, as was suggested by the applicant. If we were to take 40, the 45 and the 35-foot lots, and instead of segregating them like we have, we mix them. We did this in southeastern, southwestern Salt Lake Valley years ago. We would put 45-foot lots and 60-foot lots and 35-foot lots along the same block, and it provided so much more interest, it slowed down traffic, it made for a more cohesive neighborhood. The other thing we did, and the R2 zone allows, is we use different front setbacks. So that instead of a house after house after house after house, we had an alternating facade. And that also creates more interest and makes for a better walkable and enjoyable neighborhood. And if we think back to those dots and those pictures, that's exactly what we showed the citizens of Kerrville when we developed this zoning code. We didn't show them rural houses unless they were like townhomes or condominiums. When we showed single-family detached on small lots, they were varied. And those two simple tweaks will fit in the same exact acreage, provide the same number of 35- and 45-foot lots, and provide us a unique and innovative neighborhood for Kerrville, which is exactly what the PD is made to do. And in closing, I would like to say that we need this neighborhood, but we're better than this. We have ASR Wells, we have Symphony of the Hills, we have KAC, we have the Heritage History Museum. We are better than Bernie and New Braunfels and Fredericksburg and whoever else just got mentioned about where they have troubles. That's why we love to live in Kerrville.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. Hey, just, just wanted to say how much I appreciate all the thought and consideration that's gone into.
Tell us who you are.
Oh, so I'm so sorry. Clifton Karam with, with Lennar Homes, with the applicant. Really appreciate the consideration and thought that has gone into this and everybody's time. I did want to address the question about the alleyways. It is very significant. It, it changes, you know, the way, the orientation of the garage, you know, how the home is accessed. It doubles the, not only the, the amount of the street, but also the amount of land that's used for the street. So it is tremendously impactful, and we, we have not built on alleys anywhere in, in our, our area. Our division has not, so. Just want to say thank you, and, and of course, if there's any other questions, please let me know.
All right, thank you. All right.
George Rudy, 1616 Glen Road. So a couple of things. One, one of the basic tenets of the comprehensive plan was to actually minimize the use of PDs. So to the people that are talking about PDs, I'm not saying it's good or bad, but that was like a main thing that we did. Consolidated the zoning districts down to 17 from 40-something and said, let's stop relying on PDs. And what do we do? We blow up with a PD every time we can't find a zone that fits. So that's one thing. The other is, it's just a consideration, but when you're talking about traffic coming out of here, you've got a school at both ends of Olympic Drive. Two schools at the one end, but you've got Tom Daniels at the other. You've got this street, this collector, whatever you're calling it, spilling out into the curve of Olympic, and you've got the other one going on to the loop. The people coming on to the curve are going to either go towards that school or towards that school. Consideration, not saying it's a simple one, but at the curve, instead of having it be a straight-through dead-end Olympic Drive, then it forces all of that traffic that way to a light, a major road, Loop 534, and the people at Tom Daniels are coming out on singing winds, instead of forcing everybody potentially back to singing winds to go through town. Just a consideration. Another is the, the contract itself. I don't fully understand if I'm reading it correctly or not, but the petition, which wasn't in the packet, I'm assuming was from Shriner to do this annexation. But the service agreement is written up as if Lennar Homes is the owner. It actually lists them as the owner of the property, which, to my knowledge, they aren't yet. I guess it's contingent upon a lot of this stuff happening. But service agreements can be written to the owner, it goes with the, the land, so any new owner has to abide by that service agreement. So it would, it would make more sense to get that contract correct, and list the owner as Shriner and in the service agreement, and move forward with it as that. The rest of it that everybody's been talking about really isn't about annexation, so I'll just leave those alone. Anyways, that's what I know.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to say something before we close the hear, public hearing?
Well, if I may, just, James McKnight, but I just wanted to comment on a couple of things that were said. I think Mr. Stricki had some really good points, and he obviously understands zoning and development. And what I'd say is that it's kind of one of the issues that you have in zoning in general, is that it's a wide category. Anytime you're doing zoning, you're trying to capture a lot of different kinds of development in wide categories. So you're never going to get it right. That's the hard part about it. But you want to be permissive. So the PD zoning may be something that you wanted to try to avoid when you created this. It may be something that can allow for something unique and different. And that's true, that's in the permissive nature of it, but zoning is just not perfect. It, it has this wide breadth, and you're trying to, every time you come up with a new type of development, whether it has an alley or not, smaller lots, different faces, setbacks on the, the front facades, each time you do that, you might run afoul of one of those broad categories. And that's what happens each time. I've seen it so many times. And so that's why we use PD in these cases, is not because we're trying to, you know, run afoul of what PD is supposed to be that's unique, but it's just the nature of zoning that it, it's not perfect. You write R2, you write R1, they're broad categories, but they don't cover everything. So unfortunately, you, you were left with a choice of running with R2 and trying to get a bunch of variances, which is not efficient at all, or you use the PD zoning. And it's not always perfect, but it's the one that is, is the best fit and allows what we're trying to do.
All right, anyone else? All right, at 7:09, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, questions?
Who is the applicant? Is it Shriner or is it Lennar?
So Lennar is the applicant, and they have an affidavit from Shriner to allow them to apply on their behalf. And so we'll, we'll certainly work with them to figure out closing dates and when that, if we need to amend the service agreement. That's a good point. Not sure when that transaction occurs, so. And if I'm not mistaken, Shriner will retain the C3 property and the ag property. Lennar is only purchasing the PD property. Is that correct, Pablo? Is that correct, Pablo?
Correct.
And Councilman Garcia, one other point on the alleys. Our subdivision code also requires alleys be maintained privately. So again, with the workforce housing, that would be an additional cost for the homeowner to maintain over the life of the alleys as well, because it would not be a city maintained right of way.
Okay, gotcha. I think we owe it to some of the citizens who brought up some things to hopefully answer some of their points. First, speaking on your response to my fellow council member on the service agreement, is it not true that the service agreement does roll over to whoever the new owner is? So we don't need to really amend the date that that agreement goes into effect? We can just change the ownership and say it really is Shriner, sign it, and then once the ownership does in fact transfer over to Lennar, that service agreement's still in effect, right?
I think we can do it either way. And I chose to do it this way because you just have these moving parts a little bit. And the service agreement is going to apply to the developer, right?
Okay. I just think it makes sense. If we're going to go through it and approve it today, they're not the owner, right? So.
You're not approving the service agreement. We've included it because that's what the law says. You just have to have a service agreement as part of it. So everyone's on, kind of on the same page as to what services the city is going to offer pursuant to the annexation.
So we approve the annexation that does.
Hang on, hang on. Could we get a, I just don't need commentary over here that I can hear.
We can't hear.
Yeah, so.
I can't hear it. I don't know.
You may not be able to hear it, I can hear it. And so it's bothering me to respond in a way that's coherent and direct to your question.
So we would ask you to please refrain from visiting over there so that we can communicate here.
Councilman Garcia, can I offer one quick thing?
Actually, I have limited time, so you can speak after. But I think the public hearing is closed now.
It wasn't about that. It was toward that vehicle that there, we are allowed to do the mechanism.
Actually, Councilman Garcia doesn't run this meeting. The mayor does. If you want to ask something, you need to talk to the mayor.
Okay, I was trying to help.
Okay, if you want to, ask the mayor if you can talk.
Okay, can I regain my time, please?
Give him back Roman, but it is important for, let's let him respond to you, if that's all right. Go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor Aitkenor and counsel. I was just trying to make a point that there is a vehicle to do that was what was requested, that Shriner, my client, then signed the owner's affidavit over for Lennar to work through. And it was actually staff's idea to do that, to streamline this. So there wasn't any, it's very well out and open. And the reason was, and it's part of in our contract, that once certain things do happen, certain take-owns do happen in our PSA. But the vehicle was, if staff recommends we switch it back and it says Shriner, we can do that. But it was done so because we were asked to do it that way. So it wasn't a way to work something any different. Thank you.
Okay, Roman, go ahead.
You want to give him back his time?
Yes, he can have his time back.
Thank you. The other things I want to hit on is, and I told staff, these are some of the questions I wanted to make sure to ask in the public because I think it's important to know. This would be the time to say it rather than at the TERS, even though they're both similar. What is the price point, without a big spiel going into it, the price point for the houses that are going to be, that Lennar's going to be developing?
That's a great question. So the agreement that we currently have with Ridgeland has it set up where the price point of the homes match, they can't exceed the HUD or TDHCA limits that they set. When the agreement was originally struck.
Can you give me a number?
275 is the number right now.
Okay, my time's running out. I want to make sure to get these questions in. I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt.
Nope.
Is there, on page two, the seventh whereas clause does state tiny homes? Is that in fact what is being planned there?
No, sir.
No?
Minimum 35-foot lots and 45-foot lots, so single-family homes, not tiny homes.
So that can be stricken from that whereas clause then?
You know, I just pulled this straight from the ordinance. I think it's good to capture kind of what the zoning code says about PDDs. I think you heard some questions tonight about what a PDD is, is and isn't. It's all right there.
And what impact on our water supply is this development going to have?
So that's a good question, right? So to address the permitting discussion, we are going back and forth with headwaters. This is a complicated issue, and we have multiple sources of water. There's been a lot of discussion about our Aquifer Storage and Recovery System and whether or not that actually produces any kind of storage for us. I would argue that the city invested millions upon millions of dollars for that and pumped in a billion gallons worth of water, not a year's supply of water essentially into that system. The state of Texas dictates how that water is allocated. And as part of our permit, that would have been approved by the state of Texas, which also governs headwaters. So I think we're going to, and I said this upstairs, and I don't like saying it out loud too much, but we have to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time.
Right, so the impact is going to be?
The impact is going to be 500 homes over the course of 10 years. There's going to be additional water users going out there. And we have a 100-year water supply plan that we work on constantly to address growth and do it in a responsible way for us to be able to handle that, so.
And then last question, I'm going to try to slip in my last 10 seconds with us being at stage four, and they're not allowed to put any service lines or anything. Can you explain how that's going to happen and how?
How it would affect us?
How it's going to affect this, because right now, that's not permitted.
He has much more to mean.
With stage four restrictions, they would not be able to install and connect their water mains. Obviously, they've got to go through this process, continue with their contracting, get into engineering design. So they're taking that risk to continue their design, hopefully coming out of stage four by the time they're ready to put shovels in the ground. Their civil engineering plans for their infrastructure will not be approved until we are out of stage four, save as any other development that we're working on. So that's their risk to take to continue working forward and wait until that point. But that's, we've had those discussions with them as well.
Thank you, ma'am, for the additional time. Just, I have a concern with the PD and the design of the property. Thank you.
Yep, did you?
Drew, how many permits have you denied recently for new water? I know y'all, I'm sorry, I'm putting this in the spot, but I heard it's like you had four applicants and four got denied.
Right.
We're not putting new taps in right now.
Not commercial. There is an exemption in stage four for existing platted residential lots. Those permits are still continuing to be issued. But any new commercial construction, new meters, new water services, we're not even accepting applications for those permits.
Pablo, how long before we put the first warming boards up on this project? If everything goes hunky-dory as smooth as it possibly can?
I would prefer to clip them, but I think you're 14 to 16 months.
Okay, so not tomorrow?
No, sir, I think, hopefully we'll be able to streamline more so than we did before.
I was going to say.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, sir, not right now. We're looking at, you know, we've got a lot to do, a lot of engineering. Councilman Garcia talked about traffic impact study. Those are all things that Lennar is going to start rapidly spending lots of money on to get to the next stage on different things. But yeah, I think, given that we don't have lumber prices, you know, go, we have something that happened to us last year. I think you're at best 14 months probably before you start going vertical. You know, you get all dry utilities in, you get everything, you get everything retail ready for what you're seeing going on at the loop right now.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, any further questions? Brendan, comments? Joe? Jeff, anything else?
That's it for me, ma'am.
Roman, any last comment?
Just one, a follow-up on that. He said that Lennar is going to start with the traffic impact analysis. Has that not happened yet?
Sorry, the analysis has been done. They're required to implement that work as required.
Right, okay, thank you.
All right, are we ready for a motion, counsel?
Yes, ma'am. I move we adopt ordinance number 2023-29, annexing approximately 214.1 acres tract of land.
On first reading.
On first reading, thank you.
Do we have a second?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And we have four who are for. Opposed, Mr. Garcia is in opposition, and it does pass. Thank you, counsel. And thank you to all of those who spoke. We appreciate your input. Ready for 6B?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance number 2023-30, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Carroll, Texas, designated the Windridge Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, TERS. A petition initiated TERS to be named Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number 2, Windridge, City of Carroll, Texas pursuant to Chapter 311 Texas Tax Code, generally located north of Olympic Drive and on approximate 100.36-acre tract of undeveloped property, describing the boundaries of the zone, creating a board of directors for the zone, establishing a tax increment fund for the zone, containing a finding related to the creation of the zone, providing a date for the termination of the zone, providing that the zone take effect immediately upon passage of the ordinance, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. We do have four citizen speakers signed up. However, this is a public hearing. And Corey Edmondson also wanted to note that his letter, it also goes to 6B.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hornis?
I am not Julie Barron's, and unfortunately for y'all, I'm going to be doing this in her stead tonight. So we'll start off with staff presentation. And then we also have presentation from Lennar, which will be handled by Mr. James McKnight. So he'll come up and run through his slides as well. And then hopefully that'll answer a lot of the questions that we have tonight. And then we will be here to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Okay? Martin, if you're ready. I always feel like maybe I hide them from Martin, my presentations. All right. So this would not be the first TERS district that we have here in Curville. So we have our downtown TERS district that you all set up. That is, as we all know, that large swath and many hundreds of properties included therein. This TERS would be different than that. This is an owner-initiated TERS. And so this TERS is represented wholly by the interest of one property owner right now. And that would be Lennar, and that is their ask. So they petitioned us. What we'll talk about here, go over the concept, creation process, propose TERS number two, our next steps, and then go into questions, which I think we could maybe defer until James gets done with his presentation. But however y'all want to, if you have questions, just fire away. So what is it? So you know, it's a tool, same as we have for many of the other tools that we have in our toolbox. It's one that's listed in Curville 2050. Your Housing Chapter calls out specific action items for you to consider using special financing tools such as this in consideration of projects coming through. Specific to housing, but also to other projects as well, why we have the downtown TERS. This is governed by Chapter 311. So as we move forward in this process and we get to the next step, there will be a development agreement related to Chapter 311 that you'll be seeing. This is not the first TERS district in the state of Texas. There are over 350 of those. It's not a mud. It is not a pit. That's a clarification point I think we should make. There were some folks who were concerned that this was going to be an additional tax added on top to these folks or an additional assessment as you would get in a pit. But that's not the case here. That's not what a TERS does. So cities alone, we can do this by ourselves. Or in partnership with other taxing entities, such as the county, can participate in these. We'll get into that discussion a little bit later. What can this pay for? Cost of public improvements, public works, infrastructure such as streets, drainage, utilities, running the gamut of all that. It can also pay for economic development programs, attainable housing, and anything really that fits within the purview of that law within that zone. So it has to be kind of within that area. So two ways to create new tax increment, new construction and annual appreciation. So let's talk about what new construction is going to look like. So this is a great example, and I love it because it's simple. So you've got your base value. That land is raw land right now, right? So it has a base value of, let's just say, a million dollars for the sake of the discussion. Everything above that is going to become the increment. So the city, county, school district will get that base increment of a million dollars, whatever that tax portion is, assigned to that. Beyond that, should you approve it, the portion that's going to go to the increment would go into a special fund. And then however the apportionment goes out, some will go back to the developer, some will come back to the city. And that portion that goes to the developer that will pay for approved reimbursement costs. Julie is very detailed here. Chapter 311 outlines the procedures for creating and amending the TIF. We have the creation of the ordinance, and we have the project and financing plan. So Julie and her team, along with Hilltop Securities, has been working on preliminary financing plan, which y'all will have here in front of you. If approved, moves forward to the TERS board, and they finalize that financing plan, which essentially would just go from preliminary to final. The ordinance sets up the boundary, the term, who's on the TIF board, and approves that preliminary project and financing plan. All right. So the way that we have currently set this up and what we're going to discuss tonight is an apportionment of that increment would be 75% of that going towards the developer and 25% coming back to the city. Once that term limit is up, that increment goes away, and the full apportionment of all those taxes goes into the rule. As Drew talked about earlier, we don't have to get into all that. The outlines are specified. But what I want to mention is that the TERS is inclusive only of the residential portion of the property. Okay? There's the boundary. So these are all going to be included within the TERS documents. And again, you've seen the proposed development. So one of the questions that came up earlier was what is the limit to the value the homes can be sold at? So that, again, is set by HUD and TDHCA. We've said, and another question came, is was it the 80% or 100%? Well, the max and what's set by HUD and TDHCA is at the 120% limit. That's what they call attainable or affordable. Now, I've said this many, many times. When I bought my first house, it was not $275,000. It wasn't even $100,000. And that number always looks big to me. But I think that that number just looks big depending on where we sit in our station in life. When I talked to my father, he bought his first house for $12,000 or something like that. And it was massive. I wish I could have bought my house for $12,000. But as it stands, in Kirk County, the maximum value placed on these homes that they set, that Lennar would be able to sell these homes for is $275,000. Next year, when TDHCA and HUD reevaluate what that value is, that number may go up. Because again, when we first set this agreement in 2019, that number was $227,000. And it's gone from 227 to 275, which is a massive, massive jump. But the world has certainly changed in those five years. All right. So these are all the provisions that you're going to see within the preliminary financing plan, which allocate the distribution of the funds over the course of the years between 2025 and 2052 is what's shown in here. And so as you see in there, that blue portion is the revenue that's going to be retained by the city, is up to about $4 million. And again, these are estimates because we have to place a singular value on the homes. Over the course of those 25 years, we assume some things on the tax rates, right? Because we don't know. Future councils set tax rates differently, and we have no idea what that's going to be. So we make some assumptions in here. And in those assumptions, we set up what their projected annual rebate is and give a total down there at the end. So we'll see all that. On the right-hand side, what you'll see. On the right-hand side, what you'll see is the infrastructure costs that are going to be incurred by Lennar. I want to mention that they're not going to see the full rebate of that. So they have thirty-two million dollars worth of infrastructure costs. They're probably going to see, if the agreement plays out in this state that it's in, twelve million dollars worth of rebate over the course of those twenty-seven years. So it's not a full rebate of everything in there. What this is going to look like is as each year goes forward, sixty-four homes are built, another sixty-four homes are built, and the valuations of those properties will level out to a certain degree once we get to about twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-two, I think, is what we say here. And then it appreciably goes up, but we've now maxed out at five hundred or so homes. Okay? And so Julie's got us broken down here. She's kind of showing you what the rebate is to the developer and what the rebate is, or what not, what the taxes would be coming back to the city. And so again, that's a seventy-five, twenty-five split, as we discussed. So full development by thirty, thirty-two, all right? Well, I don't think it's going to take that long, but by twenty, thirty-two, and then twenty, thirty-three. So the assumptions that we have in here, infrastructure by twenty-twenty-five, which is what we've kind of already talked about, about fourteen months worth of timeframe, construction of the homes in twenty-twenty-five or twenty-twenty-six. First, housing units are going to be on the roll in twenty-twenty-six on the tax roll, and full development again a thousand years later. Increase to the developer after the build-out will increase only due to the growth in the value. So this is all predicated on the market. Market increases, those values will increase. Okay? What this what this does do is this incentivizes them to build, to get those houses online quicker, right? They assume that they're going to build anywhere between sixty or seventy homes in a year. But the quicker that they build that, the quicker that this value gets on the rolls. All right, next steps for creation. So we've got first reading and hearing on the tenth, second reading on the twenty-sixth. Again, what is it set up? It sets up the boundary, it sets up the terms, the participation, and the participating entities, which we can talk about here in a little bit. It sets up the board and then the preliminary project and financing plan. So with that, I will turn it over to questions if y'all have, or if you prefer, James can go through his slide deck and then we can get to all the questions afterwards.
Okay, we'll do that. Go ahead, sir.
All right.
Would you like, would you like to come over here?
Yeah.
Would it be easier to see?
All right, Martin, if we can bring up that other one.
Can you hear me, everybody? We've got some slides coming up. Oh, there we go. First of all, I do want to say, I'm sorry I missed the discussion. A month ago, I really wanted to be here for the first discussion for this, but unfortunately I had a hearing in Sibolo, and I got absolutely, if it makes you feel any better, absolutely destroyed in that hearing. So I learned a valuable lesson. It's just never miss a chance to visit Curville. I've learned my lesson, so we're good. Again, my name is James McKnight, so I'm here representing Lennar and, you know, Michael took you through the how of a TERES, and I think you probably understand it by now, but I want to take through some of the why about what this is and why we're requesting this. So I'd just like to locate the subject property. I think you all probably know where it is by now. And then just to zoom in slide of this to show that the two hundred and fourteen acres is the zoning that we're talking about earlier, but we're just doing the, obviously, the hundred acres, hundred percent residential, five hundred lots. I think you've heard these things already. So high growth potential area, as Drew stated, it was part of the strategic area for the comprehensive plan. It's adjacent to schools, so it's an excellent location for for the housing project that we're proposing. Am I supposed to point it at something? Okay, it just takes a minute. Yeah, am I supposed to point it at something? Or is it just supposed to go? I mean, it's just going slow, that's all. It's fine. Okay. I don't have to linger on this either. This is the PDD. I wasn't sure how much was going to be presented tonight, so I just included it in the slide. Okay, so this is where we get to sort of the why, the TERES benefits and the characteristics. So the general purpose of the TERES, if you're not familiar with it, is really a but-for mechanism. So it's a tool, like Michael said, but it it really has to do with this encouragement of development. And it's without that TERES, without creating the TERES, the development wouldn't happen as it is. So in this case, without the help of the city, you wouldn't get the project that we're talking about. So that's really the starting point for that, for this TERES. And it creates this public-private partnership, which you'll see later, is something that is specified in the twenty-fifty comprehensive plan, is that that's a one way to encourage growth in Curville right now. But it establishes developer commitments that you wouldn't otherwise get in normal projects. If a developer comes in, files for a permit, starts building a home, you're not going to get the kind of restrictions that you will get on a property or a project that's in a TERES, like, for instance, having a maximum home price. It also creates an affordable product that you wouldn't also otherwise get. Again, because of the agreements that are in place, you get commitments that you don't otherwise get, and that's where that real partnership comes into play. Oh, there we go. Now it's working. So Michael presented the the costs for the project, but I just wanted to show you that everything is broken out in every one of the units that we have here. And you probably can't see each one of those, but the the point of that is to show that we have broken down every portion of the cost in detail to show how much each one of these units is going to cost for streets, drainage, utilities, parks, all of the infrastructure that would go into a normal subdivision. And what you get, oh, that's right, I added it. I added my own slide and I didn't bring with me. That's okay. I just wanted to show again, thirty-two million is the end cost that you get on the far right. So that's the total that Lennar is spending on this. And you compare that to this current and projected tax growth. So at the moment, we're looking at two hundred and fourteen acres, that current valuation about one point eight million. The TERES property itself, current valuation is about eight hundred and sixty thousand. So that's the frozen tax value or the frozen valuation that you would get in creating a TERES. But within the first year that those homes are built, that valuation jumps up to twenty million. So you can see what an increment really means in dollars. It's huge. And and it's, and that growth, that value is created directly by the cost that Lennar is putting into it. We're estimating about seventy-two homes. There's been a lot of numbers thrown out there, but for purposes of this chart that you see, that's estimating about seventy-two homes per year constructed. It's a it's a pace that Lennar thinks they can hit pretty comfortably. And when you break out those values, this chart is showing just the developer portion of it. So this is just the seventy-five percent of that increment, is that for all of those twenty-seven years, you're talking about twelve million dollars. So for thirty-two million dollars of investment, they may get back that twelve million dollars. But the reimbursement of that twelve million dollars, what that reflects is the lower cost in the home. So really what that means is the city is helping put those residents into homes that they could not otherwise afford. Now I want to talk about the why as far as the the product itself. You adopted this policy, the Curville twenty-fifty comprehensive plan, and I have to applaud you because I do a lot of comprehensive plans around the state, and yours is very good, and it's very clear. And this putting in strategic catalyst areas, that's one area out of eleven. So there are targeted areas, and this is one of them, that shows this is where that growth potential is going to happen, and here we are with that project. And then you have several provisions that I pulled out from here. One talks about the diversity of attainable housing that is just lacking right now and the need for this, and how the housing price increases have increased, but the increase in income has not happened. So you have a real affordability problem. And this, you know, the twenty-fifty plan really points out how that happens. So you've got this middle market, this missing middle, as we like to call it, right, that the homes are starting to construct it at three hundred thousand dollars and going up from there. But some of these nurses and teachers and firefighters are not starting at three hundred thousand for a home. Where are they going to find the home? This plan is asking, we need those homes, how are we going to get those homes? And here we are with the product to bring those homes. It even says here in the plan, it brings forth an opportunity for a public-private partnership. There's a lack of inventory. A public-private partnership can bring that inventory around, and that's exactly what we're talking about. This is some of the products that Lennar is proposing for these. Again, as part of the agreement that's locked in is the kind of homes and sizes that you'll see, anywhere from a thousand to eighteen hundred square feet. So they have a bunch of different kinds of homes, but within their line, but that is also something that's that's locked in as part of this agreement. And I've said the word agreement many times, so I wanted to really talk about what that is. So you've got the TERES creation, that's the ordinance that we're going to be talking about today, and you've got the development agreement, two separate ordinances, two separate items. TERES creation creates the boundary, so that what TERES actually is, is a boundary line. That's what it is. It's just drawing a line of that hundred acres. It freezes that current tax base. It creates the TIF, that's the fund where you actually get reimbursed from. It creates a board of directors, which will be named at a later time. It approves the preliminary project finance plan that Michael just presented to you, and it establishes the length. So that's just the bones. It just tells you where the TERES is and how it is going to be laid out. But it doesn't tell you how it's actually going to operate, and that's what the development agreement for. So that's a really important document, but that's not what we're talking about yet. I just want you to know that's coming and that's and all of the, a lot of the questions, I think, will be answered by that document. So that's the mechanism, the development agreement, for how the TERES functions. And it's a function between the city, the TERES board, and the developer. All members are parties to that agreement. It defines all the terms, including the costs that may be reimbursed, and the maximum housing price. So this is all by contract. It defines the maximum reimbursement by actual costs. It establishes rules and procedures for the developer to be reimbursed, that is submitting receipts for the costs that they've incurred, goes to the board, the board has to verify it, city has to verify it, and then they can get reimbursed. It establishes performance criteria regarding construction and public bidding, because this is public funds, it would have to be publicly bid, and establishes the limited role of the TERES board. And the reason I put that in there is because part of this process is going to be us naming a TERES board along the way. And of the TERESs that that my firm has been lucky enough to work on is consisting of primarily developers on the, from our side on the TERES board. And I think that creates a problem for some people. Sometimes they don't, may not understand what the TERES board is for. The TERES board has every bit of oversight from the city. The development agreement is actually this, your purview to approve, and that's where all of the, all of the mechanisms are going to be put into place and oversee everything that the TERES board does. They have a very limited role, which is just to basically approve the receipts that are coming through from the developer. And if they don't match, then they can't be approved. And if for some reason they did get approved and it wasn't supposed to, then because the TERES board is a party to that development agreement, that means they'd be in violation, and that means the TERES would be terminated. So there's plenty of oversight, or I would say the primary, primary oversight is from this development agreement. I think that can be missed sometimes, so I thought it was important to put that in there. Especially because we don't have that agreement with us today, so just pointing out how it's going to function. So those are, that ends my main presentation for why, why we're asking for this, how it's going to function. But I'm sure there's still plenty of questions, so I'm here to answer anything.
Yeah, I have one. You have got your homes listed as from a thousand square feet to about eighteen hundred square feet, right? What is the price point for those thousand-square-foot homes?
We are not currently offering that that plan right now.
Okay.
In Ridgeland. So Ridgeland is really the best market pricing that we have to offer right now, the most accurate, since it's, the exact homes will be built. Ridgeland is our watermill collection, which goes on the forty-five-foot wide home sites. The Windridge will also have forty-five-foot wide home sites. The Belmar collection is the smaller one, which will go on the thirty-fives. And we have not not priced that yet. I would say you can look at the smallest homes in Ridgeland and, and, you know, deduct from there on what those homes would cost today. But they have not been priced. But if I had to just kind of wing it, you know, I would say they would start in the two-thirty, two-forty range.
Okay. Anyone else with questions?
How many other developments have you done that y'all have initiated TERES?
Maybe twenty?
So not your first rodeo?
No, sir.
Roman, question?
You made a comment that the, we don't have a development agreement. I've already talked with staff about this, so they know my concerns with not having that before us to even take a look at. And you made a comment that you feel like it would answer more of our questions if we had that. Why don't we then?
Well, that's a great question, Councilman, and I'll tell you, the process that we have, you know, Councilman Harris asked how many we've worked on before. I have never brought a TERES creation with a development agreement at the same time. That's just not the process that we generally follow. We, getting the TERES created is one part of the process. Once council members or the county or whoever we create with understands that we want this TERES in place, then we start negotiating some of the details of it. And this one, we are planning to come back within a week or two to, with a draft of an agreement, so it'll be the fastest one. But for instance, in San Antonio, the one we approved earlier this year, I think there was a year between when the TERES was created and when we came with a development agreement. So it's just a a function of how they generally operate, but I am trying to push it faster so that I can answer those questions.
Okay, thank you. And the ordinance for creating this TERES, the board members, I want to get understanding because I'm not well-versed in the tax code and how this is created. But is there, why do you, does Lennar essentially get to appoint all of the members of the TERES? Is there not anything that council can have that say in?
No, that's an excellent question as well. They, they can. No, Lennar does not have to appoint all of them. Part of the tax code does mention for this type of TERES, this type of board, that it should be a representative or agent of the developer, but we do have the ability to to open that up. And there are other positions on the board besides just members that Lennar has chosen. And it's, it won't, it's not all members or folks that work for Lennar. There's only, usually only two, maybe three, that work for Lennar. The others are just members of the development community that have either worked on or just understand TERES. But there are two positions that are set for, I believe it's the state senator and one of the commissioners. I'm blanking on it now, but there are two spots that are medically open.
Okay, I think we should probably take a look at page six then of the ordinance, and it says, Lennar may select each of the board members. Counsel shall appoint Lennar selections to the board. So that's what I was referring to. Next is, and I'll finish with this and I'll wait, I'll finish the rest of my comments after we have public speakers, if we do. The petition that is required per the tax code for the request of the designation of this property as a reinvestment zone, I don't see that petition in here. Did y'all submit one to us?
Yes, sir, we did. I actually, it is one of, I'm sorry, it's not part of this. It's one of the, it's Exhibit A to the development agreement that I'm coming up with now, so I know it, it's in the city's hands.
Okay, and my packet, Exhibit A is a petition requesting annexation, not a petition requesting the designation as a reinvestment zone? So do we may have a mix-up?
No, no, there is definitely a petition for the TERES. That was submitted a couple of months ago, a few months ago.
Okay, so if I can get a copy of that, that'd be great. And Mayor, that's all the questions I have at this moment. I'll save the rest of my comments after public speakers. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Thank you. That, you have answered some questions for me, so I appreciate that. All right, at this time, then, we will, we have some speakers, right, Julie? So at seven forty-nine, we will open the public hearing.
Good evening, counsel. I'm Jaclyn Hall, eighteen-hundred Junction Highway. I appreciate the presentations and everything. It helps we, the taxpayers, to understand it a little better. I still have some reservations about the TERES board being appointed and not elected. I just, I don't see much accountability there if they're not answering directly to the taxpayers. At the very least, it would be good, I think, to have the city appoint all the members of the TERES board instead of the developer being able to do that. Seems like a conflict of interest for the developer to appoint them. And in terms of the the TERES overall, I'm concerned about just the coziness between a private corporation and government and receiving tax dollars. between a private corporation and government and receiving tax dollars. It seems like, you know, the city is picking one winner corporation over another, you know, why a Lennar over another? And, you know, the taxpayers are going to be financing and lining their pockets. So I also believe that the developers should bear the whole burden of the cost of improvements and development. With a TERS, it basically guarantees that the new residents are going to bear a significant amount of the cost. In terms of affordable housing, I agree. That's a problem here in the city of Kerrville. And this is mostly because of the tax burden and the demand of housing. You know, the high demand of people wanting to live here. Yes, it's a very favorable place to live. So when we continue to add burdens on the taxpayers and additional channels where we're funneling taxpayer money, that guarantees that our taxes are never going to go down. That means our property valuations are going to continue to go up, and we can't get ahead. The new homeowners who buy these homes are going to be paying for those improvements in infrastructure, kind of like what I mentioned before, with the increased valuations of their homes and property taxes. So I do have a question. If we don't have enough tax revenue from the TERS and from the homeowners that they're paying for with the increase of their valuations, will the rest of the taxpayers of Kerrville, like myself, have to pick up in there? I have a question on that. And then I agree with previous speakers that have brought up concerns about shortage of water. We're in stage four. What's not to say that we'll be in stage four a year from now when they start to move vertical, as y'all were saying? The Hill Country's constantly got water problems, and it's just going to continue to get worse with increased development. You can only have so many straws that go in there before it drains it all dry. And then I do agree with Nikki Caines earlier when she was talking about putting the project on hold, at least until the first Lennar development is finished. I think that makes a lot of sense. So I think that's all my concerns.
Thank you.
Brad Barnett.
Brad Barnett, 810 Mockingbird Lane. Having personally served on the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board in Midland for over three years, I've personally seen it as a very good economic development tool as long as you have the right people on the board and you've got a good focus, so it can be really helpful. And just from a personal note, I like the fact that it keeps that tax burden in the area, that it's going to be reinvested and doesn't spread that throughout the whole community. So I would encourage you to take a serious look at this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Buffalo Brentman.
I'm just trying to figure out how to spell TERS. I'm gonna pass.
Nikki Caines.
Hello again, Nikki Caines. I live in this city. I agree, I am not for public-private partnerships. It is kind of a picking and choosing of the winners. And as a PDV with extras, I call them, I think it cuts out maybe the small-town local developers who might, if offered, go in and buy a lot and build a house. I know we had a couple built behind us a couple of years ago. It does say that this would not occur if the property was in, I don't know, better shape. It says, "Because of obsolete platting deterioration, yada, yada, yada," that it substantially impairs and arrests the sound growth of the city. I'd kind of like to know, how long has this property actually been for sale? The fact that that whole area has now been annexed, or it will be annexed, but only part of it is for housing, and the other part went to commercial, it does, at least for me, tend to make me think that it will end up going different when the time comes. It could end up being TERS III or whatever else. I didn't see anything in here about Lennar being responsible for or being limited to possibly the number of homes, if it is built out, that they can actually own and rent out. If this is truly going to be a time and a place for someone who needs a home, then is it going to end up being a rental community? Or is it going to be actual homeownership? And I looked at the 27-year plan before the city actually gets 100% of the taxes. First responders, how are we going to pay for first responders or any other city utility-type stuff, you know, like first responders? If the city is only getting 25% of the taxes, that those homeowners are actually going to pay. And I actually agree with the previous comment that as those homes are built and sold and the values continue to increase, the same people that we say need, you know, affordable housing are now going to be paying higher taxes. Let's see, anything else? I think that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peggy McKay. Peggy McKay, 103 Westchester. In the ordinance and the supporting data, I didn't see any mention of the current financial health of the country overall. Economists are increasingly warning of higher inflation and higher costs, particularly in 2024. Would it not be prudent for this Lennar development to be the current one, the first one, to be completed? And then have a review of what we have? If you've seen the quality of construction under the wallboards, the basic construction, from what I'm seeing so far, it's not something I would buy. Why would I want someone who can't afford something to begin with to buy it when they have to maintain it? And it looks like they're going to have more maintenance costs because of the construction. Also, the 2050 plan hasn't been mentioned as far as keeping the Kerrville charm, retaining the natural beauty of the area. So far, like I've mentioned before, the developers come in, and we have no trees, no natural beauty. And I like what Bruce said about altering the look of the houses, the spacing, how they're placed on the lot. Now we have what Bernie and New Braunfels has. They look like Box City. That gives some refreshing and appealing appeal to it. Also, I have a problem with the ordinance as it was included in the package. It said it would be available this evening and that the hearing was held past tense on October 10th. We got the package on the 6th, which means it was already typed. It was already approved when the meeting is on the 10th, not the 6th. And evidence, it also mentioned evidence had been received and was in favor of creation of the TERS, that all comments were received, again, past tense. I have a problem too with the board authority. These are unelected people. They may or may not be paying local taxes. Also, it said it qualifies for because of obsolete platting. Well, there's no platting on raw land. And the deterioration of structures, which I didn't see any structures on the property. I have a problem with this being presented, which makes it look like it's already, it said that it was in favor of this presentation. We're just having it. To me, it looks like the cart is before the horse. And tonight should be a presentation of the facts. Give council time to review it, listen to the testimony, and then come back later. I do have a problem, again, like I said, that the quality, from what I've looked at and what we have so far, may not be what Kerrville wants. Setting it up row by row, contrary to what Bruce said, is not appealing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Asking of the speakers that have been signed up. Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Thank you, Jerry Wolf. I just have a couple of questions just to, so I understand. Is this TERS district, does that comprise this first 100 acres? Or does it comprise the full 214 acres?
100 acres.
It's 214 total, but it's 100 for the TERS. Yes.
100 for the TERS? So you're, so that comes out then to $64,000 a lot? It's $32 million, you said, will be the revenue generated, the taxes generated? Sir?
No. Do y'all want me to, I was gonna, I got lists of everybody's comments and happy to answer them all at once.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay.
He's got it.
All right, well, it's 12 million for 500 houses. So that's what, is that $6,000? Or $60,000? I don't have to take the time right now to do it. Is this TERS board going to have the authority to be able to issue debt? I understand, no? Is that specific in the terms of the creation of the board?
Well, it will not be, and it's not part of what they can do.
Okay. Okay. And I think originally, when there's talked about $5 million being given to Lennar for this development, what happened to?
If you've looked at, if you've looked at all the financial pages, Jerry, they show you all of those and how that's all broken out.
That's a lot to go through, so it's simpler to ask a question to people that know the answer.
Yeah, now, real quick. And so some of the points on this, and, you know, and before Michael imparts some knowledge onto us, there's still a lot of unanswered questions, which is why we have the first reading, the second reading, you know, and there's kind of the process. It's not necessarily putting the cart before the horse. We're just making sure that we have everything hashed out. And there still is a lot of unanswered questions. I mean, to be frank, we're still trying to figure out what this looks like, how it's going to go. The development agreement's not been done yet. And as Lennar and the city are trying to work through what this is and how we're going to get there, a lot of those questions will be. So under the Chapter 311 kind of code, and we won't dive into that unless you really want to nerd out on it later, we can. But all of those questions as far as rebate, so it's not us giving money to them. They're spending the money, and then we're rebating it back to them based off of the Chapter 311 code. So it goes into a TIF, and then it goes back into as basically a rebate. So they're fronting all the money for the project, which is what's allowing it to keep it, I'm not going to use the term affordable, but to keep the costs relatively down versus what it would be alternatively. Does that make sense? If not, then we could talk about it. We can get with Julie, and we can nerd out after. But it's basically a rebate. Lennar's forking up all the money to do the project. And then under the TERS agreement, based off of whatever we decide, whether that's 2575, whether they kick, you know, council decides to do something different, then those rebates will go back to them after it's already been paid. So we're not giving them money, and then they're getting an additional rebate. They're forking up the cost, and then through that tax increment financing, they're getting the rebate back.
All right, was the $5 million still in play then?
I don't know where the $5 million came in. So there was a cap, I think, which I think, yeah. So Michael can speak on to that one.
Okay. All right. Well, anyway, I lived in Houston, as I've mentioned here before, for many, many years. I don't know, housing developments? You haven't seen housing developments, though you lived in Houston. And I know of one of them ever been where a government entity helped finance any of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may, just kind of, you know, we talked about a lot of the good and the bad. Now I kind of want to talk about the ugly. You know, a lot of our plans, most of these plans, you know, 2018, we'll just use kind of ours. That's the '86 legislation, the '87 legislation, and '88 legislation. '86 legislation during that time stripped annexation rights and some of the state issues. You know, we kind of talked about it tonight. This is a donut hole in the middle of the city at 214-ish acres, take out the annex portion. As it stands right now, it's operated in a CCN. And if they choose to withdraw from anybody, whether it's Lennar or whoever, they could withdraw from the ETJ, and there's no control we have. So we talk about plans. We talk about comprehensive plans. We talk about what we can do. But we've had three legislative sessions that have been pretty, you know, pretty intense as far as how we can operate as a city within the, you know, ETJ and what can be done. We talk about affordable housing, but there's always going to be pros and cons to it. The ugly side, though, is if we don't necessarily make a decision or figure out how to compromise or work through it, whatever that may be, we potentially could run into an issue where we're having to fork up water in our CCN that we have no control of, and we're going to have to do it, even if it's at one and a half, you know, times that. So there's some things to consider, you know, as we're looking through this. One of the other points that was kind of brought up was, and I understand P3s are relatively, I mean, they've been around for a while, but they're relatively new, you know, kind of in use. But they are a great mechanism. They are a great tool to try to provide funding amenities and opportunity within cities. In this project, talking, you know, obviously taking the fire hose of everything and just kind of learning, you know, all the processes, this project was kind of bid out, per se. You know, this was opened up to businesses, to developers, to builders, to try to come in, to include the local, you know, local developers and local builders. Lennar was the only one that put in for it. So in a way, yes, it went to the winner. But just in the procurement or the purchasing or the public side of things, what we try to really do, which obviously slows things down, Lennar was the only one that put in. And so it's kind of one of those things where we say, ah, we don't want to do this because they're the only ones that put in. But we did open it up. We did give them opportunity. There is no behind-the-scenes thing. So I just kind of wanted to kind of point that out to the residents, and we'll definitely get some more community engagement on this as well. So now I'll let Michael impart his wisdom on us.
Is the public hearing still open?
Yes, public hearing is still open, yes. Thank you, Dalton.
Bruce Drakey, 21, Earl Garrett. I don't have any problem with TERS. Or I'm a little concerned that it's only this 100 acres. But I don't know enough about that. And I'm not concerned about Lennar. They're one of the largest builders in the U.S. I think in 2022, they built over 66,000 homes. So they're doing this all over the country. They're very efficient at it. What I am concerned about is that we are more than doubling any number we have ever offered to a developer for attainable housing in the city. The number that we have talked about over and over again is about $10,000 a door. And most, when we did the 380 agreement for the McDonald's, they got less than $10,000 a door, much less. I think the project across Olympus, I think that was about $12,005, if I remember correctly, on the market value with the deal that they deliver the homes and the prices, which we'll see, because we don't know. But we're going to a huge number. At $23,000 is the way I did the math. 12, 3 divided by 540, that was the number I picked in there. It was about $22,600 a house, I want to say. So $22,000, $23,000 a house. The ask at the EIC this summer was for $9,000 a house, about $5 million, which is where that number came with. And the infrastructure was just for the collectors, which was about $7, $6.8 million. So now, we're going to fund, we're looking at $33, $32 million, which isn't just the collectors. And we're talking about 12.3, almost two and a half times as much money. Much more money than we've ever offered before. And we're offering it, unfortunately, to a company that last, in 2022, delivered $6.8 billion of housing, delivered. No, it was bigger than that. I actually didn't put that number in, I apologize. It's a big number. Oh. From their annual report. No, 6.8 billion of the homes that they delivered. And on those homes delivered, those are delivered on the ground, that includes all the development, the lot costs, everything, delivered, ready for furniture. Their net margin was 21.4%. Now, in the packet, the base case used a number of $285,000 for these homes. And I, 275 tonight, 285's in the packet, we know it's gonna go up. I use the 285 number because it's what I had. But 21.4% of $285,000 is a net margin of over $60,000. $60,990 at 285. Now, they build these houses all over the country and not every one of them is supported by a TERS. So we're giving $23,000 to a company that's gonna make over $60,000 on every one of these houses, whether they get it or not.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Roll your eyes when you see me get up. This is George Burdie, 1616 Glen Road.
Yeah.
Anyways, so a couple of things, dispel a couple of myths. The term missing middle is not referring to a price point, it's actually referring to a form of housing between duplexes and up to 19. So it's, that's the missing middle that people are talking about when they're talking about it. The other is, the original contract to Lennar and the project that's being built, the contract itself specifically says affordable for people up to 80%. It does not say up to 120%. It's a flaw in the contract, again, and it's been just let to go. This contract, oddly enough, talks in, what is it? Section 9. It refers to the tax increment calculation and it refers, I'm assuming this was a cut and paste from TERS number 1, it says 100% of the city's available portion will be given as a rebate. Everything else described as a 7525. Either way, it's a bad deal for the city because we're giving away tax money that is not revenue to the city. It's cost, it's payment for cost of services rendered. So, when you, somebody mentioned it, talking about fire. If you remove the, the household is paying their taxes just like they're supposed to. If we turn it into a rebate, the services being delivered at a cost to the city for this development is essentially being pulled out. So your budget is now underfunded. So, how you're gonna fix that gap, I don't know. Build more houses, give away more money, get more revenue, I don't know, it's a Ponzi scheme if you look at it right. But bottom line is, you gotta correct the contract to match what it is you're gonna try and offer them. The other is, but for, okay. True, but for this development, you wouldn't get property tax revenue. But for this development, you wouldn't have the corresponding expense for the services being delivered. That's the streets, the maintenance of the streets, the fire, the police protection. All of those are expenses. If you just gift away the future costs of that or the revenue coming in for it, you're basically underfunding your budget, again. The issue of what they were giving away, I haven't heard that EIC funding was tabled indefinitely or permanently. If you add it back in, you got 5 million plus 12 million of public money going to this one project. That gets you to somewhere in the neighborhood of $30,000, I think, per home. And again, to his point, for what? The only thing that's occurring here, we're not getting affordable housing to the community. What we're doing is we're using public money to subsidize the developers so they remain whole. So they're selling these houses at market rate. Part of the housing cost is coming from the public, part of it's coming from that individual home buyer. At the end of the day, the community is paying the same amount for the housing. Lennar walks away whole, the community walks away with a big hole. And we're not gonna fill it with anything that we're getting in this deal. So, good luck with how you're gonna explain why the taxes on everybody, including the new home buyers, everybody is gonna have to pay more in taxes to provide the services for these new developments. It's a bad business model for a city. It's a bad paradigm, it's what I was saying before. You can't subsidize property that is not producing actual revenue. Property tax is not revenue, it's payment. So if it doesn't produce revenue, it's not an economic influx to the community. And someone's gonna stand up and tell me I'm an idiot, I can see that head shaking, so that's okay. Good luck filling that hole.
Thank you.
All right, one last time, is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Do you want to make one response for my head shake? And that's, that has to do with the, the price point that you're selling it at and the 12 million on top of that. Lennar is not selling the home at the price they would normally sell it and then getting another $12 million on top of that. They are reducing the cost that they would normally sell it at. And the 12 million is the in-between. So, they are not made whole, they're selling, they're committing to selling a house for a lower cost. The main factor of cost for selling a home is the cost in creating the infrastructure. It's the $32 million and created, that's one of the major factors in what you price the home at. So if you're spending $32 million on that infrastructure, you price the home to make up for it in your model. What they're doing there is saying, we're gonna sell the house less than that, committing to that. And in doing so, the city is then giving back some of the money on the infrastructure. They do not make the same amount as they otherwise would on the house and then get $12 million on top of that. It's not money going directly into their pockets. The better way to look at it is that $12 million is actually, I mean, you said it before, it is kind of a subsidization. Because it's saying, we're taking the $12 million to Lennar, but it's so that someone can pay less on their home. And that's where the partnership comes in, is the city is participating in a partnership to help people get into homes they would not otherwise afford.
Thank you. All right, going once, going twice. At 8:17, we will close the public hearing. Michael, do you have some things to share with us?
I suppose. I tried to get them all down. I'll see if I can go in order. I think Ms. Hall was first. Why Lennar? It's a great question. You know, Lennar was, this, the first project, Ridgeland, as many of you know, was offered up many times. And no one was able to bite. Lennar came to the door, they said, we can do this. And the city participated, and Lennar is currently in the process of doing that, right? So why Lennar on the second phase? Well, the first phase was city-owned property. And so, the city went out and asked for a builder to come in and do this, and they said they would. Now, because they feel comfortable in Kirville, they want to move on to their next phase and so they're under contract to buy the next piece of property. So, that is why Lennar. Again, I think James spoke to you, bearing the whole cost of the development, the price of the product would be higher than what we would like for, for what we were calling affordable workforce housing. So, let's see, Ms. Kane. The public-private partnerships, I understand, not for everybody. It's within the comprehensive plan and so it's an item that was discussed as an opportunity for you and placed it within your comprehensive plan. So, hence the need for that. As far as the obsolete platting questions, that's part of state law that dictates we have to write that in there. It's not obsolete platting because it is a vacant piece of land. And, so, investors, this was a question that came up quite a bit. Yes, investors will be able to buy homes there. Now, why is that important? Not everyone who is in a workforce housing issue, not everyone who's a nurse or is a firefighter or a police officer or a public works employee is in a position to be able to buy a home. Many of them will need to rent a house. And so, there is, it has to be both. It cannot be one. I find, I don't think it's possible to find a development where it's all owner occupied and there isn't an opportunity for rental homes to be there. You're gonna want to have a certain portion of this market that will be rental homes so that folks will be able to rent them. Because they just aren't in a position financially to be able to afford to buy their first house. First responders. How are we gonna pay for the first responders? You know, it's an interesting conversation because you are giving up something. You are giving up something so that way, there can be staffing in this community for the services that we need. Speaking to the hospital, they said something so scary to me. They said, you know, the problem you'll face is you go into the hospital for a serious issue and we don't have enough staff in that wing to be able to accommodate that. And so you are gonna get a $100,000 flight to Austin or San Antonio so you can have your care. So they don't have enough staff. State hospital, I spoke to them earlier, they have about 200 vacancies. And the number one issue that comes up for them is, people look at the jobs here and they say, I can't afford it. I can't afford to live here. So that's their biggest issue, they have 200 vacancies there. I don't think the hospital's quite as high, but it's pretty close, right? James Avery had to build a plant down in Corpus because we couldn't accommodate the housing needs that they had there. So, from a first responder standpoint, we have the same conversation with both of our chiefs. We have the same conversation with our public works director. That we have staff who has to leave and go somewhere else because they cannot find a place to live, they cannot afford to continue to commute from Bernie from San Antonio to here. And so, how does that impact our budgets? We have overtime for infinitely more staff than we need to, constantly. Both on fire, PD side, all the time. So from a budgetary standpoint, it behooves us to be fully staffed. It's a better plan. Let's see. Mr. Wolf, yes, there is a proposed $5 million EIC grant for regional infrastructure. And that is to help not only the infrastructure that is contained within that development, but future development around it as well as for the detention coming from that commercial space that's above it. In addition to the collector street, which we've described as needing to be wider than it normally would if it was just meant to be interior to that development by itself. Let's see. Bruce brought up a good point about previous developments. So the land on Ridgeland was valued at about $1.69 million, something like that. What's not mentioned often is the fact that Olympic Drive didn't exist. Olympic Drive cost about $2.5, $2.6 million. And so if you include that in, not all of it necessarily, but if you conclude that in, that substantially increases the price per lot, let's say, that Lennar would receive as an incentive. So I would include that. Let's see. Lennar is a for-profit company, I don't know what to say to that. They are, they are here and they're gonna build homes, they are asking for reductions in that so that way we can have it at a price point, but they are a for-profit company and they're here to make a profit, so I don't know how to answer that. Or the Ponzi scheme. The market rate? It's not market rate. If it was market rate, it would be $330,000, $340,000. I just got done, before I came here, I was in Live Oak and MI Homes was building similar projects in Live Oak. And those homes right now are selling for anywhere from $350,000 to $400,000. It's not exactly the same, I'm sure if I had to go square foot to square foot, but they were starting at the high 190s in 2018, 2019. And now they're $350,000 to $400,000. It's a function of the market. So, this is helping to buy down that cost to make it attainable. And, Ms. McKay talked about the higher inflation trends and the concerns there. Well, one of the things that Lennar is able to do in their business model is they are buying down the interest rates for the homeowners. So they are able to take what would normally be, what you would, what you would pay in a mortgage for a $230,000 house, at a $275,000 house with Lennar, is about the same payment because they are able to buy down that interest rate payment. So, I think that's, I tried to answer most of that. Do y'all have any questions, please?
Thank you, Michael.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it. All right, counsel, any other questions or comments before we vote?
Yeah, I have some additional comments. I can't find anywhere in this ordinance where this creation of a TERS is contingent on the 311 agreement. So I just want to put that out there and if we can review that after this meeting sometime, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I want to understand that question.
Yeah, so we discussed that the TERS creation would be contingent on whatever, if it passes the 311 development agreement. I don't see anywhere where it's contingent on it.
I'll go back to what Mr. Knight said. This sets the framework and then you're gonna have an agreement. If the agreement doesn't come next time, you all would be free to pass on the second reading of the ordinance, right? Put it down the road. Or you see an agreement you don't agree with, then you push everything, you don't vote for it. That's the, that's the foolproof method of control by you.
Okay, thank you, I understand. I'm not completely in favor of TERS zones in general. I think, though, that this is somewhat of a better way to use that instrument, I would say, than the first TERS that we created in the downtown area. But that's only with the proper terms in place. And when it would truly provide affordable and attainable housing. In this case, we don't have a 311 agreement to review, which, as a couple of people had already said, would give us more information and answer more of those questions. We have not yet seen the result of Lennar's current development, the first one, which is in the same area and which we gave them the land of valued approximately $2 million. But with what we have seen concerns me. The way some of the houses are being built in the first development, it appears that they're trying to cut some corners there. I don't see good reviews just nationwide on them. The price point does not appear to meet the truly affordable for the medium or even low income. And, we are subsidizing a developer, which apparently is one of the largest developers in the nation. I think our citizens and the workforce deserves better from us in that capacity. And even throughout the months of executive sessions that we've had and through the very minimal, very few public discussions we've had, which this is kind of the start, the very first one that we've had, we still have a lot of unanswered questions. To me, what we're doing is, we're doing something, we're trying to approve something and consider something when we don't have all the answers, when not everything's in place. And to me, that's like crossing a bridge that's still under construction. You have a general idea of where you're going, but you're not sure if all the pieces are in the right place. And with all due respect to everybody that's been involved in this, I think we can do better. And I think we, our community deserves better. To accomplish one of our highest priorities and goal is to really get affordable and attainable housing here. And so for those reasons, I'll be voting against this.
Can I make some comments?
Sure.
If y'all could have been a fly on the wall this last few weeks, you probably would have heard me muttering about this vote tonight. My son is sick of hearing about this. My spouse has been kind, but she's also sick of hearing me go pro and con, pro and con. Some of you would be surprised how many of your arguments I have made myself this last couple of weeks. And I like the analogy of a bridge that's not completed yet, it is a good analogy. However, our community has set a goal, a goal of attainable housing. Is this vehicle we're, we're building tonight, a portion of it, perfect? No. Are the houses gonna be the ideal answer we would like for our community? No. But this is a first step. Over this first reading and the second reading, many points will be negotiated and many points will be more clear, like Mr. Garcia has pointed out. The problem for me is, if some of those answers aren't made to my satisfaction, I won't vote for it either. There's a negotiating that needs to be done, putting that on the second reading. Do not, do not misunderstand. If you want this to pass, you need to come to the table willing to negotiate. I'm gonna vote for it tonight, but I'm not guaranteed I'm gonna vote for it next time. And, for many of the reasons that have been pointed out tonight. There's a lot of work yet to do. And I appreciate the work the staff has done. And I appreciate the work the staff has done. I appreciate the work Lennar has done and the broker has done, but some of these comments they ring true with me. And we need to be careful that we not only represent the citizens of Kerrville who elected us, but the citizens who will be living here in 20 years with an opportunity to live here. That's my comment.
Brenda, any comments?
Yeah, I kind of agree with Councilmember Garcia and Councilmember Herring. I will be voting for this tonight, but I believe there are some unanswered questions. I would like to see some more talk at the table, and I'll wait to see what happens between now and the second reading. I appreciate the comments from both sides. A lot of the comments make sense, a lot of the comments bring up questions I didn't think about, so I appreciate comments from both sides of the aisle here.
Yeah, anything you would like to add?
Yes, ma'am. I too agree with Councilmember Garcia, Hughes, and Herring. I will be voting for it tonight, but second reading might be a totally different thing. It's, there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of what-ifs, there's a lot of... Peggy, you brought up a point tonight about the quality of construction. You know, it's, I know the process of building homes, I know the process that the city has in place to go around and inspect the homes. You know, if it doesn't, the city's going to shut it down. It's building a house for a client, that happened. So, you know, it's, the second reading's going to be a lot. Michael, I would like to know what is said Monday at Commissioner's Court when this goes before them, before the next council meeting, which I'm sure will be on the agenda for that as part of the second reading, because that will be beneficial. The county's going to get rewarded for it because they're going to have employees living there too, if it gets here. But I know that we need the housing. It is blatantly apparent that we're losing employees. I know personally that Chief McCall has lost officers because they can't afford to drive back and forth between here and Siblo. You know, thank goodness that, my wife, when she started working as a police officer, she lived in Bernie. She didn't quit because she loved working here and she loved Kerrville. I was just fortunate enough, I got her to stay in Kerrville and move here. But it's where we love, it's where we live, it's where we want to be, but we need the housing. And with this TERS, it can either make or break it. Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments. You've all said what I'm thinking, that good points have been brought up tonight. I appreciate everyone and appreciate the thought that you have put into all of this. This is a big step, it's a huge step for Kerrville, we all know that. And Lennar, as you know, you want to do it right, we want it done right too. So for me, I will vote tonight on yes, and I'm like the rest of the council members, we'll see what reading number two brings. And answers that we want, we hope will be there, and we'll take it from there.
So while I would love to take it upon myself to just go to the county next Monday and ask, y'all could give us some direction on, you know, hey, Michael, go to the county.
Hey, Michael, go to the county. If we could get that on their agenda item for Monday, I know today's Tuesday, if it would be possible, because we need all key players involved. That's my opinion.
Is it possible?
I'm taking that request to Commissioner Letts probably right away, if y'all direct me to go that way.
Does that change any of what's in the current ordinance? Would we need to include Kerr County or anything in it as well?
Yes, so it would, obviously, if they participate, then our portion would go modify a little bit.
Yeah, so to the point of kind of this evening and actually beyond council, it's kind of two wrong. If the council wants to move forward...
With the first reading and how we've kind of presented it with what we're obviously going to start negotiating and, you know, putting our money where our mouth is and figuring that out. If the county decides to play, then let's play. If the county decides not to play, then we'll bring that to council and figure out what that looks like. Did that answer your question?
It did. So the ordinance that we are considering tonight would have some different changes to it on second reading if the county does want to participate in this TERS?
Yes.
It possibly could.
It possibly could, okay. Mayor, with that then, to give us more time, negotiations to happen, I think in an effort to talk with the county if they want to participate, and y'all have heard all of our comments and the public, I think we can start getting something done. I move to table ordinance number 2023-30 until the October 24 regular meeting.
Is there a second for that? It dies for lack of a second. Do we have another motion?
I move we adopt ordinance number 23-30 to create a wind ridge tax reinvestment zone.
Is there a second to that?
On first read.
On first reading, thank you. We have a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. We have four yeses, opposed, we have one no. Mr. Garcia. Thank you all for all of your work, your time. Let's take a seven-minute break here.
Seven minutes?
Seven.
Okay, are we ready? Everybody's in place? 8:44, and we will resume the city council meeting. We are ready for 7A. Rita Sanchelli.
Ordinance number 23-27, an ordinance amending Chapter 58, Article 3, to the city's code of ordinances titled Smoking in Enclosed Public Places and Places of Employment. To clarify various sections, revised regulations in accordance with state law, to include the definition of a minor and to change defenses to affirmative defenses, ordering publication providing other matters related to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
I think we cleared the house, man.
We do.
I want to talk to Casa.
Garavol, tell us what we need to know.
I'm just waiting for my PowerPoint to come up. So this is 100 pages and I apologize in advance. It's just 12. I promise I'll be fast and short and sweet. So, good evening. We're here to talk about the smoking ordinance, and just to kind of give you a brief history, the smoking ordinance was last updated in 2014, and before that, it was previously updated in 2001. I did want to reach the purpose of the smoking ordinance, which is to protect the public health and welfare by prohibiting smoking in certain public places and places of employment. So how did we get here? Well, if you recall, in March of 2022, we had a citizen come up and was concerned about the, how the smoking regulations and smoking rules were applying to the...
Bingo halls.
BFW in regards, because they were no longer a bingo hall. Well, upon investigation and talking with the BFW, what we found is they actually had a tobacco license, which allowed them to sell tobacco on the property, which, according to our code, because they have that license, they can actually allow smoking on that property as well, on that facility. So there's nothing we could do at that point in time. However, what we did find when we were going through the ordinance itself, we found that there was opportunities for improvement, and so that's what we're going to try to present to you today, is some of those changes that we're making, we're recommending to make the ordinance a little bit better. So one of the things that we do want to define is bingo halls, because the current code does not actually define what a bingo hall is. And so we want to go in there and identify or add a bingo hall definition, which will talk about what a bingo hall is, but also identify the Chapter 2001 of the Texas Occupation Code, which regulates how bingo halls should be operated. Also, Section 5866 of the current code, it basically says, any building while being operated as a bingo hall is allowed to have patron smoke during the operations only. For a retail tobacco store, this definition, we expanded it to include electronic vaping devices and liquid nicotine. We added the definition of retailer, because that was not included in our current code. So we added the definition of retailer to ensure that it provided clarity for enforcement. And then Sections 5863, 5864, 5865, we're recommending removal of those sections, because they all talked about where not to smoke, and we actually have a section, 5863, that actually talks about prohibition of smoking. So we're actually moving those sections under 5863, and those will be items 16, 17, and 18. Another section, as you see here in these specific sections that are before you, there's language in there that says defensive violation. We added, we actually added the affirmative language in here to the ordinances, because this actually puts a responsibility on the defendant to raise and prove up their defense. Without this, the responsibility falls on the prosecutor. Section 5868B, this is a section that is obsolete, a lot of it basically comes down to smoking is not allowed in restaurants. And then we have this other section that we added, which is intentionally or knowingly. This allows us to add a required for mental state to the offense. Basically, this means that the prosecutor is required to prove that the defendant was intentional in their action or knew that they were failing to comply. And the last major changes I'm going to talk about here is Section 5874, which is B, was removed. We felt this was redundant as to what a retailer is. And then lastly, because of state law, anyone under the age of 21 is considered a minor. Those are the biggest changes that were, that are being impacted by this ordinance.
I had no idea it was so complicated.
Did you, were you able to notify Ms. Jackson about what you learned?
Yes, ma'am. And that happened last year when we, it took us a couple of months to work through all that, but she was made aware of it. And then eventually, I believe, they settled their differences in regards to, I believe, the will.
Okay.
Okay, questions, comments?
I was just going to add on to what Councilmember Hughes is saying. I had a meeting with then-city manager, Mr. Hoppy, about this. This request was one that council passed unanimously in March of 2022, I think. And around June timeframe, the request was to have this item come back to us around the end of June. So around there, I reached out to Mr. Hoppy, and he had told me that they had worked with Ms. Jackson, and then I had met with her too, and her concerns were thankfully resolved with this. So, but just saying that with the understanding of the timeline was a good amount over a year and a half from then, I'm glad we're finally getting this on. I know it's not like at the top of our priorities to do, but with a council agenda request that was supposed to come at least back to us within a two-month timeframe, it's good that we're at least here to review it, so thank you.
And we heard you loud and clear at the council retreat, that y'all wanted this across the bridge.
And at least the issue was resolved in a reasonable amount of time, so thank you.
Right.
I have, I know it's late, but I served on the 2001 ad hoc committee, and that's back when people smoked in restaurants, on planes, trains, cars, buses. And after chairing that committee, that was the worst committee I was ever on in my life. I felt like I was smoking, I was on fire. So I'm thankful that it's not as controversial as it once was.
All right, if there are no more comments, counsel, do we have a motion?
I'll move ordinance number 2023-27.
Is that a second? Second. Have a second. Right hand, please, if you are in favor, and it passes unanimously. All right, 8A, Rita Sanchelli.
Ordinance number 2023-24, second reading, and ordinance amending in part, ordinance number 99-18, is amended by adopting revised rate schedules for residential services and distributed generation rider containing accumulative clause, containing a severability clause, and establishing effective date. There's no citizen speaker signed up.
All right.
Do you have a slide deck or anything?
I do not. No 12 pages. This is the second reading of an ordinance related to a small rate change for K-Pub. There have been no changes since the first reading, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, counsel, questions for her?
No questions, just want to thank you, Ms. Doja and Mr. Whitler for sticking with us throughout the whole meeting. Being able to be here, even if we don't have any questions.
Thank y'all for serving.
You did good sports, so.
Will you tell Louis what class you were in, please, ma'am?
Class 36.
25.
34.
34. There you go, 34.
Some of us went before there were classes, so.
In light of everything tonight, and Louis the other day on his show after I did that once, I had to reiterate that I have another classmate in the room.
Yeah, I appreciate that question.
Okay.
Move to approve ordinance number 2023-24 on second reading.
All in favor, right hand, and it passes unanimously. Thank you, K-Pub. Appreciate you guys. And thank you for the bucket rides and all you did on Saturday, that was super. All right, we have 9A, Shelley.
Resolution number 32-2023, a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with a real estate broker for the sale of real property located at 505 Center Point Drive East. Each property described as Lot 1 of View Estates, a subdivision out of the Benjamin B. PAC survey, number 51, abstract number 266, and consisting of approximately 17.68 acres. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right. Garavol, tell us what we need to know here.
I have a small presentation that I put together, but basically is just reminding you that state law does allow the city of Kerrville to sell property. There's different mechanisms that we want, that we can utilize, but in this situation, we want to use a Realtor to help us sell this particular property. And city policy requires that the city manager identify and request authorization from city council to sell that particular property. This particular property was acquired in 1978, and it served as a locator for the airport and has since been not in use, I don't know for how long, but it's no longer in service. The property, I know this is a small picture, but you can generally see it, it's in the far corner, it's just south of Center Point itself. And this is what the property looks like when from an aerial view, and here's just some additional pictures of what the property looks like. And then you can see there that antenna slash locator that is no longer in use or functioning. And any questions you may have?
What's the sale price?
We'd have to work that out with the Realtor.
This just lays the foundation for our story, and what is the best opportunity to bring back to council.
And I was going to say, what I'd like to do is that it says, not necessarily just for sale, but for disposition, and that could possibly be, that could be other things.
Could be a trade.
Could be a trade, could it be give it away, yeah, negotiate, I mean, all kinds of things.
And we'll bring multiple options to the table.
Okay.
Because this is the first step. We would have to bring any sort of transaction back for approval.
But I don't want, I would like for it to not be restricted just that we're looking at it only to sell, so, okay. Do we have any questions?
Are they doing this for free? Because the expenditure required is zero on our packet, what are we looking at there?
Again, we don't have anything that just lays the foundation to figure out what that could be.
Just start talking and...
Start talking to figure out, do we want to sell, do we want to trade, do we want to leverage?
No, I mean, like for the broker, to actually contact with the broker, have y'all had any conversations with?
We haven't had any conversations with any brokers, but it's, we didn't know where to start at this point in time, because we don't even know what the value of the property is, we could take a gander, but we didn't want to do that.
Do we have a motion?
Of course, I would make a motion to approve Resolution Number 32-2023, to enter contract with a real estate broker for sale or disposition of real property.
Second. All in favor, right hand, please, and it is unanimous. All right. 9B.
Resolution number 34-2023, a resolution nominating a candidate, or candidates, to curricular appraisal district board of directors, and this item is eligible for executive session, 551.074, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Okay, with this, counsel, if we have names, we can submit them. I believe later on, in another, at another meeting, we will get a list of those who have been put into the system and that we'll be able to vote on. I don't have a name to give either. Okay. Is there someone who is interested in doing that? I have not talked to anyone who is at this point in time. Roman?
No, I didn't, I reached out to staff because I was, and this is probably something we just need to look at. I think in order to be a full participating taxing entity, we really need to figure out if we're going to have some type of application process, what we're going to do. I don't have any name to...
or what we're going to do. I don't have any name to nominate just because it, I thought, you know, I didn't know how this was going to work. And that, this is the first time, I think, I've been on council that we've considered.
We have not had to, we've not been asked to put a name in for quite a while, so.
It's been.
Um, I would recommend that we, do, do we have to vote on it if we just want to pass? Okay, that's what I would recommend. Everybody in, okay? All right, nine C. This is a short one?
Yes.
Resolution creating an ad hoc animal regulations review committee. Brenda, do you have some information?
I do. At this time, I mean, we know that we've got some animal ordinances that need to be revised based on state law. And so, I had recommended at the last council meeting to form an ad hoc committee to go over those ordinances and report some findings, conclusions, and proposals to the rest of council. So, at this time, I would like to, uh, list who the ad hoc committee members are. And it, it would be Karen Guerrero from Kerrville Pets Alive, Jennifer Houghton from Town and Country Veterinary Clinic, Amy Underwood, who serves in an, in an advisory position for Kerrville Pets Alive. It would be Leslie Jones, who represents the big fix, and Curtis Thomason, who is our retired Assistant Chief of Police. And he has graciously agreed to, to sit on this ad hoc committee with us. So, I would need, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to appoint these members.
Second?
Okay, the only thing I have, this won't, this does not affect the responsibility that the county has to our.
It does not.
It does not.
No, ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions?
Just want to make a correction to how we're going to do this. I think is your, you would want, you're wanting to approve the resolution with those five people's names?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, it's, it's not, my only thing is, I was hoping anytime we have a committee created, it's a council-appointed board rather than, with all due respect, rather than just one council member making all the appointments. And so, that's just my only concern. I feel like it, it's under city council, and it should be, it should go through our normal process of how we usually appoint ad hoc committees. So, with that, I just, I don't like the, I don't appreciate the process. This has gone to one be created so quickly and without any type of notice that we should be looking for people to get on this committee up until Friday, and now we're here, and nobody else has an opportunity to do that, so.
I feel that she's got a good, good variety of people in the community that, or entities that would be good.
Yeah, and I've, I've also been in discussions with the county. They are aware of this committee, and they will be providing some input for us, you know, as needed, because we, we all kind of work together. And a lot of the issues that we have are related to cruelty cases, you know, sick puppies being sold on the side of the road, hot cars with animals. So, it's, you know, we do kind of work together with the county, but for purposes of this committee, I would like for it to be represented by people who will have worked closely with those situations.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I have no concern probably with the people. It's just the whole process that it's gone through, you know?
Okay, we have a motion. Did we get a second? We have a second. All in favor, right hand, please. Opposed? And Mr. Garcia is opposed, so it passes four one. All right, the solar eclipse. It's almost here. Chief.
Looking forward to your hour presentation, chief.
Chiefs, I guess I should say.
Thankful we did reduce it.
Yeah, we did, yeah, absolutely. Well, if you haven't heard, we have a solar eclipse coming, two of them in fact. And we've been working on the, the emergency management planning for, for both eclipses. The first solar eclipse we'll be seeing is coming up on us in about four or five days on Saturday, October fourteenth. We've been working as an emergency management team with the city to prepare, to mitigate, to respond to any issues that come up during the solar eclipse. As we've looked at the October solar eclipse, we've really dialed back our concerns as, as we do more studying and we watch some of the trends in our community that give us indicators of visitors and people coming into our community. One thing I do want to mention is not all of the planning information will be made public tonight during this presentation, partially to, to keep some operational security around some of the discussions we've had in emergency management, as well as the information is continuously changing. And we're quite a number of months out from our April event that we're really planning hard for. Just kind of a reminder, in February twenty-twenty-two, the city council established an ad hoc planning committee and an emergency management committee for the solar eclipse events. Part of that were the people that, that you see listed here. In February of twenty-twenty-three, that group met and decided that we needed to split into two committees, an event planning committee as well as a city emergency management planning committee. This allowed us to, to be more efficient and more focused in our efforts and in our work groups to get more work done. The event planning committee actually broke into three subcommittees focusing on community education, event volunteers, tourism, and marketing. And this committee is led by our Parks and Recreation Director, Ashley Boyle, as well as the Convention Visitor Bureau CEO, Julie Davis. From the city emergency planning side is primarily what we're going to cover tonight. That's a city-led committee by the, by Chief Maloney and myself and our assistant chiefs, as well as Emergency Management Coordinator, Jeremy Hughes. The committee was established primarily to just focus upon our emergency management and the seven FEMA community lifelines to prepare our community for the events as, as they, as they arrive. Multiple meetings a month are held. We, we deal in, in everything from internal city committees to groups with the county, groups with Tech dot. We have a ton of partners that we'll cover here in just a few minutes that kind of give you an idea of all the people that we engage with, sometimes multiple times a week. Our, our most, our, our approaching eclipse is, is the Ring of Fire eclipse. There has been some confusion between the two eclipses from everybody from local residents to state agencies as to which is which. This is the Ring of Fire eclipse. It occurs every one to two years somewhere in the world, last seen in the United States in twenty-twelve and won't be visible again in the United States until twenty-thirty-nine. Experts estimate our population increase would be about ten to fifteen percent. If you're trying to figure out what that is, event-wise for the Riverfest, we're planning for an event about the size of our Fourth of July celebration throughout that day. We, we believe there'll be minimal traffic impacts primarily around the event location, minimal cell disruption, just like Fourth of July. If you're down in the park, you may experience some poor service there and minimum impact to our basic needs, food, water, and fuel. Partial emergency management response for this weekend, meaning we won't establish a full EOC. We'll have a mobile command center at the location. We'll have increased public safety staffing, both police and fire, at the event location with the ability to shift those folks outside of that location if we, if we do encounter problems somewhere else in the city. We've been working with AT&amp;T for our internal communications. We, we all operate on first, AT&amp;T FirstNet, and they're supporting that through an AT&amp;T SAT Colt. I just like to say that. It's a satellite cellular on Light Truck that'll support all of our public safety communications and give us the ability, if the communication grid becomes too cluttered, to still communicate, still be able to get calls and, and data through. We're not really anticipating any road closures or detours. If we do, it will likely be just post-event and then around the event for public safety to move pedestrians in and out of the park. And we, we have full situational awareness on our community lifelines that the chief will tell us more about here in just a few minutes as it, as it's really more important for the, for the April event as compared to the October event. As with anything, we ask that our citizens just plan ahead and be patient. I think patience is going to be a word that we hear a lot around both of these events. We're going to ask for our citizens to have a lot of patience and, and be neighborly. In, in any planned event, we always ask, you know, you know, us in emergency management, oh, we always want you to be prepared, and, and the basic things are what we always ask you to be prepared with, food, water, and fuel. What can you do? You can enjoy it from home, or you can come down to Louise Hayes Park to enjoy the event along with us and, and NASA. One of the, we'll ask you to follow the, the safety procedures that Stuart described earlier and get you some of those eclipse glasses. Don't stare at the sky and get damage, get damage to your eyes. And that really concludes the, the weekend event, this weekend. As I said, we're, we're not expecting the, the influx or, or the potential issues that we think we may see in the April eighth.
And, and I think that's real important to kind of differentiate between the two. They, they kind of work a little synonymous with the, hey, wherever a solar eclipse coming up, and people think, okay, we've got the influx, we're talking about it, and we're really talking about it the April eighth. And that's been the focus of our planning. Of course, we're still watching the October fourteenth, so we're still ready to respond. That is what we do. These are both planned events. I think that's one of the best things about them. We have done the unplanned events. We've done the, the winter storms the last three years. We've done flooding, threats, wildfire, you name it. That's what we do on a regular basis. This is a planned event. So, it gives us much more opportunity to really look at some of the information out there, and I'll talk about that today for this one. So, what do we know? For the total eclipse, this is the one I'm talking about in April, so to make sure. So, we anticipated two to three times the population increase based on the experts, and so that is what we're working with out there. That's where we're trying to get that information. So, we're talking the experts out there. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for your bucket list, so to see. This is going to be a great event. The annual eclipse is going to be great, too. So, if you're here, I think it's going to be a great one to see. This one, however, on the total eclipse, this is going to draw some people to come to it. I think we're going to get a draw because we're one in the center line, but also allows people to get to see this. That may have missed it in the twenty-seventeen in the northern states, and now you're going to have a better opportunity to see it in the hill country, Texas, all the way across the U.S. Like I seen in the U.S. in twenty-seventeen, so that's important for what we're doing. It won't be visible again in contiguous U.S. until twenty-forty-five. So, we're reviewing after-action reports, so, so we don't make this up as we go along. So, as I said before, history doesn't repeat itself, but it rhymes. And so, we utilize that information from twenty-seventeen to really say, what do we need to look forward, or we need to plan for? So, we looked at Natrona County, Wyoming, very important one, very similar. I'll talk about that one in a second. So, we've been focused on that one. They have an interstate, very similar structure as far as city and county. And so, there's a lot of great information that we have taken from that. Carmadale, Illinois, the Idaho Community Planning White Paper, Oregon Emergency Management, Asper Tracy Resource, that's for healthcare preparedness. We've been working with Peterson for that, and then working on traffic impact articles and some studies out there. So, Natrona County, county population seventy-six thousand, city of Casper, population fifty-seven. Overall, for Wyoming, they have five hundred and eighty thousand citizens. They saw they had a one point two million dollar, one point two million visitors in the state for the twenty-seventeen. So, that is a significant increase. In Wyoming, of course, traffic increased about a week prior to the event, so we'll be monitoring that, and we'll be monitoring that up to this one. Traffic records were broken on roadways. At time of totality came closer, drivers began to pull off the side of the interstate and highways, and travel times increased three to four times normal. So, these are things that we're all taking into consideration, and great that we have this information to look forward. So, who's our stakeholders? So, we have been working on our community lifelines, which we'll talk about in a second, but we have our event planning, we have our city emergency management, and we also have a city-county kind of joint emergency management planning meetings. So, these are monthly meetings where we get together with the county and our partners and some of our stakeholders out there and really kind of do a report out on what we've been working on since we broke kind of separate in February. So, we've been working with the Kirk County Road and Bridge, City of Ingram, South Texas Regional Advisory Council, T-DAM's in there, Tech dot is in there, Peterson Regional, and I'm not going to read them all, but we have a lot of engagement partners out there and many other experts in the field. And that'll be important in a second when I talk about the community lifelines, what we're doing to ensure the safety and security of our citizens and making sure that we can all enjoy these solar eclipses for both Saturday and then the one in April, and then make sure that we're watching what we need to. Solar eclipse management planning phase, so our goal is, as always, to support the missionaries, prevention, protection, mitigation, which is what we're working on, response, and recovery. So, we're supporting the thirty-two FEMA core capabilities. I won't go into those if you'd like me to. We can definitely get together on sidebar for this. And seven community lifelines, which I will talk about. The community lifelines are strategically planned to support each other. So, each community lifeline. So, community lifelines are like safety and security, I'm going to talk about in a second, food, water, shelter, health and medical, energy, communications to include public information, transportation hazardous material. So, those seven community lifelines are key to stabilizing government, to ensuring businesses and to ensuring the sapiens, that our citizens have the basic needs. So, we watch those in any disaster in anything we do. So, we're trying to mitigate those ahead of time and identify some of those challenges that we may have out there during the solar eclipse, for that's our planning phase, and that's what we're working on. So, each community lifeline has three to four objectives. Each objective has about a four to five action items, which we won't show today, and each community lifeline meeting involves a technical expert. That's the stakeholders in there. So, it's not a big group that we get together. We bring in key people that we need to talk to for that. So, so they're involved with that, and we get the experts in the room. So, these are community lifelines I talked about just a second ago, and so those are the seven. They're actually FEMA did put out eight now. So, let me talk about each one of the community lifelines as we go forward, and we'll talk about some of the objectives that we've done, not the action plans.
So, safety and security is the first community lifeline that we looked at. And of course, our ability to respond to emergencies is, is kind of key priority to that safety and security. So, we've really looked at what our abilities are to move public safety personnel through the community, through the city, as well as how we're going to stage our resources to be able to effectively move into the community when we know post-event, most folks will be moving out of the community. We've really done a lot of studying with, as to how we're going to stage that, and we pre-planned a lot of that already. We've also identified where many of the mass gathering locations are. We want to know where people are going to be. We've actually partnered with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. They've set up a portal where you can register those events. We continue to ask folks to, if you're having a mass gathering event, if you're inviting folks to a location or having an event, please register that event so that we can include that in our emergency management plan. We're also working continuously to identify our resources as far as our assets, the things that we can reach out and get, or the things that we may need, as well as personnel. Personnel will be a challenge for us as, as this approaches, and we're working through plans right now of how we will staff and, and address some of those issues with our personnel, as well as the help of other folks through the city and throughout the county.
So, another lifeline is food, water, and shelter, and some of the objectives we're working on that is identify resource to help provide food for public safety and support personnel. So, our staffing will be over multiple days, not just on the Monday. So, we're multiple operational periods. We're going to identify locations to stage water and distribution to citizens and visitors, working on shelter for additional first responders that are coming in and staging our assets, and then, of course, identifying a potential shelter for pets. So, some of these are very standard in emergency response, but it's something that we're going to look at everything, although some of them we may not utilize. Health and medical is another big one. So, this is what we work together. We partner with Peterson. We work with Franklin Clinic. We work with the Raphael Clinic. We work with our partners in San Antonio through South Texas Regional Advisory Council as a bigger region about what we're going to be able to do, because obviously with traffic impacts of two to three times the normal. So, we have to be able to identify those ahead of time. So, we're trying to identify opportunities to decompress the Peterson Regional Emergency Department. So, if we have an influx of citizens, and we have an influx of people that are sick or injured or anything else, Peterson Regional is designed for us, for our citizens of Kerrville, Kirk County, a little regional from there. of Kerrville, Kirk County, a little regional from there, so we are working with them on that. We're working to identify some medical stations and staging areas, identify any additional EMS and medical station support, and then also working to procure any additional medical supplies during the event. Energy is another one of the community lifelines, and so that's working with the power grid and fuel. So we work with K-Pub, C-Tech, Vandera Electric to have the conversations. We work with Maxi Energy, we talk to Minimart, so we talk to a lot of the different vendors here in town, identify additional fuel resources for citizens and visitors, letting them know ahead of time of the expectations, and identify to secure fuel resource for public safety.
Through a lot of our review of after-action plans from other communities, one of the repeated items that everyone had challenges with was transportation and the issues that were caused upon the completion of the event and people trying to move from the area. We've worked really hard, along with Tech Dot, our street department, our Public Works Department, to work a traffic plan, identify streets that we can utilize for counterflow to increase the rapid egress out of the city, to try to move as many folks as we can out of the city rapidly. We've also worked with them to look at road closures and how we would accomplish those, everything from signage to barricades to personnel. We've had a great partner in Tech Dot. We reached out to them very early on. In fact, they're just starting to have conversations with other communities. We've been in conversation with them for three to four months. They've been a great partner to us and are really helping us with our transportation plan, our traffic plan. We've also worked to identify off-site parking locations for our multiple events as well as transportation for visitors. By having off-site parking from our downtown event, that gives us the ability to control the release of people, which also gives us the ability to affect the traffic on the roadways and try to time that out a little bit better. We're also working with Tech Dot to get real-time traffic flow information. We will have a representative from Tech Dot in our emergency operations center that will help us manage traffic flow and give us information real-time on what may be happening down the road that's eventually going to affect us, as well as identify potential issues with Kerrville Aviation. We've been in conversations with the airport as to the number of air assets that they believe will be flying in and that they'll be having to deal with on the ground there. So very in-depth conversations around transportation, as we saw in those after-action plans needed a lot of attention.
That's my favorite community lifeline. We're going to invite you into Kerrville and we're going to help you leave, too.
That's right.
So we're going to figure it out. Hazardous material is another one, so we're identifying location and resources for additional trash locations around town, obviously with an increase of people. Coordinate with trash pickup vendors for additional service runs for businesses and/or discuss them with them for just our pickup for our citizens. Identify resources for post-event debris management and identify location and resources for portable restroom facilities. So communication?
Communications, another area that we've been working hard on. We've identified opportunities to support cellular broadband and Wi-Fi systems, been in conversations with a lot of those providers to get a better understanding of their systems and what their capacities are and how we would know if those things start to fail or we have issues in those areas. We've also ensured that our public safety communication resources are backed up. We have our radio systems that we feel very confident in, but we've also, as we talked about before, we've also been dealing with FirstNet and AT&amp;T and working to get some backup support to keep our phones in service so that we can continue to work there. We've also identified, we're also working to identify locations and means for citizens and visitors to contact 911 should the cellular system experience problems. We would encourage folks with hard lines, visit with your neighbors, find out who has a hard-line telephone or what businesses maybe in your area have a hard-line telephone should you need to access 911 systems. And we've also worked to expand our LCRA radio system. This was kind of in the backburner plan from the time that we started looking at this system was to expand this citywide to give our other city departments the ability to communicate, and this is a great example of why that was important. Public information, we're working through our PIOs. Our PIO at the Police Department is Sergeant Jack Lamb. He's working to put a plan together to help us identify the timelines on when we want to release information and what information is important to release at what point. We get a lot of questions on, why haven't we had more information? We're so far out. If we put that information out currently, by April eighth, it would be a distant memory. So we're really working to try to coordinate and ensure that the PIO messaging is on point and on time, as well as provide the community with the education for contacting public safety in a time of need, so.
Emergency management for the total eclipse, so this will be a full emergency management response. So we'll have a fully-staffed emergency operations center and a mobile command center to manage the actual event at the park. There will be a significant increase in public safety staffing across the city, so we've already identified and notified, give notice to our staff that there is a window that there will be no vacations at that point, so they've all been notified. AT&amp;T, the SAT Colt, I like saying it, too, support our public safety communications will be available, traffic monitoring and surveillance, there will be road closures and detours, there will be public safety staging sites and many additional missions and objectives to support the community lifelines. So what can you do for the total eclipse? Chief said, well, be patient when we get there. It's part of what we're going to have to do, but it's plan ahead for emergencies, be prepared. I think that's one of the most important things, but that goes without saying. That has nothing to do with the eclipse. That has to do with the hurricane that is coming. That has to do with the ice storm that's coming next. Whatever the emergency may be, everyone needs to make sure they have an emergency action plan. Ready.gov is great. Hill Country Preppers have a website with great information on there also. Food, water, fuel, and access to Atlanta, as Chief said. And follow the city for more information on how to prepare. We're going to provide more. We'll provide more informational road closures when it's timely and when we need to release that other key information to assure the safety and security. So what's the next step? So we're gathering information this Saturday. This is not, Saturday is not a test run for April eighth. Those are two very, very different events. So Saturday, we have a few things we're working with, so to be able to kind of see how they work and how they work for us, we did on the Fourth of July also, so we're doing a few things with that. We're going to continue to plan for the details for each community lifeline, so we're drilling down more in those, more action plans, getting the experts in the room, so we're still a thousand yards out, but we're working our way down in each one of those. Engage additional stakeholders with that, focus meetings with those experts. We will be providing public education, information and an FAQ, and we'll be working on a tabletop exercise internally, so we can kind of test some of the theories that we have and put some challenges on those in the December, January incident action plan, of course. Develop emergency response for contingencies and engage all city personnel, opportunity to support the operation, and then work to, Julie's not here, but identify the funding sources. So Chief, do you want to recap?
Yeah, I think, you know, just in recap, annual solar eclipse, October fourteenth, not the big eclipse, not what we're expecting in April. Partial emergency management response with the command being down at the event, similar public safety response to a Fourth of July event, and we're going to test some of our theories and assumptions for the April eighth event. Total solar eclipse, full-scale emergency management response with full EOC function, mobile command centers, staging areas, additional public safety support, expanded operations to support the FEMA community lifelines, and a planned response for all community lifelines. Citizens should be prepared for some potential impacts to basic services and pre-plan for that and be prepared.
I think the biggest key takeaway is we have the planning for this, so this is what we do. We are prepared for this, we're prepared to respond, going to be a great event. Saturday will be a great event in the park, so will April eighth, so it will be two great events, so.
Well, you've gotten great kudos from Tech Dot. They have said you have, that this community has been far ahead for planning than any of the others they're working with, so.
On our game.
Super. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes.
Lots and lots of time and effort and planning into this, and we appreciate it very, very much. Thanks for the update.
Two questions real quick. You hear numbers, you hear rumors, you hear stuff. Do we know any idea or have a clue of how many people? I've heard 35,000 to 50,000 people for the partial eclipse this weekend.
No, that's a 10 to 15 percent. So what got mixed in the message is some of the information that they were taking was from the 2017 total eclipse. I saw parks, I don't mean our parks, the state put it out and teased it for Kentucky and Tennessee, that was a total eclipse. That was the impact that they talked about there, so that is some of that. We have worked with our CVB, our hotels are normal occupancy, they're not full. Same for Fredericksburg, same for the San Antonio, there is no increase in pricing with that, and that's kind of how we see the polls check. We will be monitoring, come closer, so. Best thing, though, with everything, we're planning for the April eighth. We have a plan in place of what we're working towards, so we have that in our back pocket, so we can always watch and we can always flex and shift if we need, or pivot as we need to.
So my second question was, it deals with April the eighth. What do you need from us? Us being council, or what do you need from the citizens of Kerrville?
Money.
Patience.
Money.
Stay off the road? How are the two biggest departments? And I'm thinking you guys are going to be running all over the place. If I went to Buzzzy's and bought three briskets and had Buzzzy cook them, and we took one to the police department, a couple to the firehouses, would that, is that something that y'all could use?
We could take one to the fire department, a couple to the police department.
I mean, is that something that would be beneficial if we had something like that for y'all?
Yeah, you know, it could be. We'd want to pre-plan that stuff. We're pre-planning in advance and sometimes when things show up to be helped.
Brenda can deliver it to you on the eighth.
Okay.
No, if that's something that's, you know.
You know, I think for the community, the biggest thing we can ask for is patience and understanding that this is a one-day event and we're going to get through it. There'll be some disruption to your normal activities for that day, but it's not going to be a zombie apocalypse, you know.
Well, yeah, but my biggest fear is that on the eighth, the one in April, that the congestion is going to be so bad, people trying to get out of town, that ambulances won't be able to make it to calls.
We've pre-planned some emergency routes outside of our primary, what we would consider our primary response, highways, roadways, yeah. And that's part of what we're not really advertising because we don't want people to go, hey, there's another way for me to get somewhere.
Okay, okay.
So we've pre-planned that stuff to ensure that we can move through. We've really worked hard on the traffic plan to do the best we can to move folks. You're right, it'll eventually, we're directing people to a parking lot likely on I-10, and once that backs up, it'll start backing into the community, and we'll experience delays. We're going to do our best to manage that chaos, and that's about the extent of what we can do when you have that much humanity in vehicular traffic.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much.
Yes, thank you again. All right.
Just for fun, the day after the total eclipse will be here.
Yes, that's exactly right, exactly right. Okay, is there anything that anyone needs to put on a future agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Since they came and spoke tonight about Veterans Day Parade, which will be on November the 11th, which is Veterans Day.
Yes.
I would like to have it put on the agenda for the 24th meeting in two weeks to allow them to come ask for whatever they are going to ask for. Their fees, I mean, we're out of time on it, so it needs to be on the next agenda item. And I can coordinate with Brad and with Sarah to let them know that y'all are on the agenda, y'all better get your ducks in a row, so.
I'll go sponsor that.
Yeah, second.
Okay.
One thing with that is we're running up against timelines on parade permits and those kind of things. We're like less, we're about 30 days out, so I hope he, I gave him my contact, I hope he contacts me, but if you happen to speak with him, if you'll encourage him to reach out so we can get that process.
You need that yesterday.
I can do that tomorrow, because that's candy, right? That's yourself and candy?
Yes.
Because, yeah, I think the city needs for them to file stuff, a whole bunch of stuff with them, too, and probably even for the waivers is what's needed.
We will diligently start working with them, make sure we get it, and come the 24th, we'll bring something to council that I think will be.
And I know we did it last year, too, so if you want to work with, and Staffordshire has something similar to what we did last year.
Ashley was phenomenal with everything last year. She was the pivotal point with everything, so.
Take a look at that, we have.
Okay, anything else we need to put on future agenda?
Can you get a second so we can?
We seconded.
Oh, he seconded, yes. Okay.
Didn't vote though.
All in favor? And it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Pardon?
We don't, we, we talked about it up here, and since we didn't have anybody, we don't have to go in.
Yeah, we passed on that.
Yeah, we're good.
Kirk had.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else before we gavel out of here? One, two, three, 9:33, we will close the meeting.
Good job.
Thank you all for staying with us.
You know what I forgot?